All right, we'll call this regular meeting of the Pearland City Council to order on Monday, December the 6th, 2021 at 6:39 PM. With that, we will ask for everybody to rise as we say our invocation. And Member Perez will be leading us in our pledges to our both flags. You'll bow with me, I'd appreciate it. Family, Father, we just ask you to come and be with us tonight. We thank you for the opportunity to get up and serve this great city. We thank you for the citizens that have made it out tonight. We thank you for our staff and the work that they do. And, Father, we're always mindful that you'll keep and protect our first responders all across our city, and certainly our first responders across this nation, as they serve to protect each and every one of us every day. So, Father, we just ask that you be with us as we deliberate this business of this council and our great city, just be with us. May we be mindful to be honoring and pleasing to you during this meeting. In Jesus's name I pray. Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now to the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Thank you. All right, thank you for that, Member Perez. Moving forward in our agenda, roll call and certification of quorum, I will certify. We have a quorum present. We have all members of the council present, with the exception of Councilmember David Little, who will be absent from the chamber the remainder of the evening. Moving forward, we have citizens' comments. I think we have several that have signed up to speak. And Mayor Proten, if you would introduce them, that would be great.
Thank you, Mayor. First, we have Mr. Jim Johnson. If you could please make your way to the podium. State your name and address for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes. We've got a timer up there for your convenience. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Good evening, Council. Jim Johnson, 6117 Broadway Street, Pearland, Texas, 77581. The good news is I can talk fast and get through a lot of information, but I'll be brief tonight for you guys. Earlier this year, council called for an election in May of 2022 to add a stormwater or drainage fee on the May 2022 ballot. As presented, the fee currently has $1.79 for businesses per 1,000 feet of impervious surface a monthly fee. Out of that $5.2 million, roughly $3.24 million come from business. Unfortunately, businesses that don't live in our community do not have a vote. As an association of businesses, we hope council will continue to listen to businesses as they make the final ballot language. Tonight, council will approve a resolution to amend that said ballot language. Again, over the next weeks and prior to the final date in January, we hope that council will continue, and we encourage you, to listen to businesses and stakeholders as you amend and potentially look at the final language and paying feedback on this potential issue and any concerns that businesses might have. Again, we encourage council to continue to listen to businesses and potentially amend ballot language after hearing potential concerns from businesses related to the May 2022 ballot. That will have $1.79 charged to our businesses per 1,000 square feet of impervious surface. Thank you, council, for your time. And Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, for being here. We appreciate those comments. Mayor, next, we have Gail Bourgeois. My apologies for not being able to pronounce the last name. Bourgeois! All right. If you please restate your name for the record and your address, thank you for joining us this evening.
Yes, it's Gail Bourgeois, 3506 East Circle Drive, Pearland, Texas, 77581. And I'm basically here to represent several people that we have in the audience on East and West Circle for areas of our properties that have been flooding over and over and getting worse over time as businesses and residential properties are being built all around us and flooding us out. So, basically, several people will come up and speak about their own land. Unfortunately, I don't have anything that shows that we could bring pictures and stuff in here, but I'm going to submit this to everybody on the panel, that we basically have a whole group around East and West Circle has had all kind of residences built all the way around it, and businesses all up and down 518, and then, of course, even further out, all the way to Pearland Parkway and beyond. That being said, I'm going to use my landmark as Green Go's only because the end of our street is where Green Go's is, and I think everybody knows where Green Go's is. But our four streets, we have plenty of property, half acres to acres. Everybody has plenty of green space. Over the years, we never had these issues. Since we've had all these buildings being built around us and all these residential properties that are chocolate block on top of each other, you've created a situation where we have nothing but concrete and driveways and such anymore. And basically, you have officially made our streets a nice little drainage ditch for the city of Pearland. Further going into these properties, have some pictures of Green Go's and all the different businesses that have been built all along the freeway. Our properties back up, the drainage is not sufficient anymore. All of our properties are just going up. Several of us have flooded, getting further and further down the street and in the houses and in people's garages. Several people have flooded numerous times. So, if you go down the street where Green Go's is, we have drainage in a couple of different places. And if you look at the pictures of how Green Go's built a wall over here and how the car wash built the wall, that's a lot of the issue where people's water is holding on their properties. I'm also, several of the neighbors have pictures, and basically, if you looked at any of these pictures up close, which I know you can't see, you're going to see that every one of these pictures is pictures of people's houses with the water all the way up to their doors, okay? So, we're on acre and half acre properties, guys. That's a lot of water that we're taking on a regular basis. We used to just fear basic storms, now we fear a basic rain. The last one we had was around New Year's, and it was a basic rain, and almost everybody on our street got flooded, which you'll see in these other pictures, and I will send to you guys in an email. And I think my time, once again, lots of pictures. We need some kind of resolution and get some drainage that's appropriate at the end of the street, because what we got right now does no longer work, and we're in a bad situation. And everybody's kind of had enough of hearing how our drainage is great, because it's not.
Thank you for your comments. If you could pass those along to staff, and they'll make sure that we get copies of those. Yes, you can give them to the secretary there? Yeah, and they can make copies. Sure. And I did want to, just real quickly, before we move forward, Mayor, remind everyone of the rules and procedures. While we can't dialogue or respond directly, we will make every effort to reach out to you after this. So, just know that your comments are heard. Next, Mayor, we have William Greer. If you could please make your way to the podium. State your name and address for the record. We have the timer up here for your convenience. Please limit your comments to three minutes. And thank you so much for joining us this evening.
Thank you, council. My name is William Greer. My address is 3403 East Circle. My house is the first house right next to the car wash. I'm here to address the drainage issue, as are my neighbors. My house has been flooded several times. We spoke of the New Year's Eve. It wasn't a torrential, it was just a hard evening rain. We all met in the streets and was digging ditches out, and our houses were, I had to come home from work, as you can see, I work at the post office. My wife called, and just in that evening rain, my house, the water was up to the threshold at the front door and the back door. When our ditches overflow into our yards, and they still try to flow towards 518, when it gets to my yard, my yard is adjacent to the car wash, and there's about an 18-inch dam that the water has to go, I'm sorry, the water has to go over into the car wash. There's no way for it to flow out of my yard except towards the front. And if all the ditches are full, it's pushing its way to the back, it's not going to the front. I'm not an architect or an engineer, but you can see there's a problem out there. I know we've had surveys done, we spoke with members last year, I believe, and we did see them come out, and my understanding, and we did see them doing it. Their survey was done at the culvert. Somebody said, "Well, we just need to dig your ditches deeper." The culverts, you can go out there, even right now, after today's rain, my house, like I said, is the first house right next to the car wash. I probably have eight or 10 inches of water in my ditch. If you walk that ditch to 518, which is the direction of the flow, by the time you get beyond the car wash and up by the gas station, there's less than an inch of water in there. The culverts themselves need to be reset. The ditches, the dirt and the grass in the ditches are lower than the culverts. I know that's asking a lot to say redo all these culverts, but, you know, like I said, I'm not the engineer or the architect, but digging grass out of the bottom of these ditches are not going to help. Our backyards fill up, has nowhere to go because it's flooding from the street, from house to house, and the road itself is the high spot. We just ask you guys to look at that for us, and we do appreciate y'all's time. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Greer. If you have anything to add to what was, just take it over there to the city secretary. Yes, sir, thank you. Next, Mayor, we have Simon Beck. Please make your way to the podium. State your name and address for the record. Limit your comments to three minutes, please. We have a timer up here for your convenience, and thank you so much for joining us this evening.
Good evening, council, Mayor. Simon Beck, I reside at 3408 East Circle Drive. I'm here to expound upon what my neighbors have been commenting about this evening. Essentially, you know, as years grow, as years go on, you guys develop, you know, businesses have been built. There's some things that we need to address to help with the drainage situation. I also have pictures to show you guys just after, you know, a heavy storm or, you know, a good rain. And my house, I had about an eighth of an inch before I was going to take on water. My garage received about an inch of water, a little over an inch. And it's also hindering me from doing any improvements in my house. My driveway is failing because of the water saturation that it holds. You know, as a homeowner, a majority of that is my responsibility from the back, and I'm willing to invest that money and time. However, with the structure that has been built around us, you know, between myself and my neighbor, there's probably 400 feet of wall, and it's mid-thigh on me. And it's just getting choked up right there, and then we have a two-by-two grate to help with overflow, and then the culvert. So, you know, nothing crazy needs to be done, you know, we just need, we need an upgrade, right? We're an older neighborhood in the city. We just need a little bit of help. You know, we're asking you guys, like I said, I'm a younger generation, right? I'm investing a lot of money in this house. I've invested tens of thousands of dollars. I want to raise my kids here, okay? So, just with that being said, having to fear, you know, getting water in my house, you know, my house did flood during Harvey, that's the only event, I was disclosed when I purchased the property. But then after Harvey, we get a little evening rain, and, you know, voila, here we all are. So, just to keep with the nuts and bolts, you know, that's all we're asking. You guys, take a look at it. We did have a survey shot. We conversed with the project manager or one of the folks involved with the drainage department, and it has been brought to my attention that he has transferred. So, we just want to make sure there's some continuity between, you know, new folks coming into the department, or whomever is going to be looking over these projects. So, if, you know, if we can bend you guys' ear a little bit, you know, maybe get some discussions going, that's all we're asking for, and thank you guys for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Beck. Please remember to take your images over to our city secretary, she'll be sure to add Next, Mayor, we have Mayner Paz, is that?
Not even close.
I do my best, it's the best I can do. Please state your name and address for the record, and we've got a timer up there. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Good evening, council and everybody. Yeah, I'm a new neighbor over here in the neighborhood. I'm about, I've been here for about a year and a half.
Please remember to state your name and address for the record.
My name is Mayner Paz, my address is 3418 East Circle Drive, 77581. And like I said, I've been living here for like a year and a half. And I have a story over here, and I have pictures of my house. December 31st, I came for lunch at my house, and my house is, was almost flooded. Water was always coming in, in the house, and this is one hour rain, heavy rain. And also, I had to say this, this is really unsafe over here. I got a picture of this. If we get, if we get a fire, there is no way we can get, this is really unsafe to this, this to a fire. And I got a house over here of my neighbor that they had to elevate this house because of the heavy rain, and it still, the water almost get into their house. So, let's also say, we're just over here to address this. If you guys can help us, we're here to raise our new generation, our kids and all that. We moved from the old neighborhood where you used to live, used to get flooded, and I bought this property over here thinking about, this was a better neighborhood, but I even called my neighbor, and I throw a joke on him, I say, "Well, you never told me I bought a swimming pool over here," because it looks like a swimming pool. The water was all the way to my knees. So, if you guys can help us to address this, we're not asking much, but we all are asking what to, work together in this, and we can address this if you help us. And I'm sorry about apologies about getting nervous, and that's all I had to say. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much. Please, please remember to take your photos over there to our city secretary, and she'll get those added to the packet. Next, Mayor, we have Ivan Zuniga. Please make your way to the podium. State your name and address for the record. Limit your comments to three minutes. We've got a timer up here for your convenience. Thank you so much for joining us.
Good evening, council and mayor. My name is Ivan Zuniga. I'm on 3409 East Circle Drive. As you've noticed, you know, the reason why we're here is to address the situation and issues that we currently see, right? You're going to hear from all of us that we identify the issue, you know, during, not necessarily during hurricane season or minor storm, tropical storms, you know, we flood. I'm situated on the third house, next to the car wash, and every time we got a large storm or tropical, you know, my house get flooded all the way to the front door, or water get in through the garage. So, I guess, we know the situation, we know the issues. What we're asking for is, what's the resolution? What kind of guidelines you're going to give us, or what we can do to get something resolved? I'm sure we're not the only ones, or first neighborhood that has been experienced this situation, that, you know, the development of this neighborhood has been established for the past, you know, 40 years, and now we're being built up for, you know, different development, and now we're underneath, you know? So, what we're asking for is, you know, different guidelines and help, trying to get something resolved. Like, for example, what I notice is on Magnolia, obviously, when you're trying to widen, you know, the roads, you have a newer system, you know, the retrofits, what you currently have. So, you know, is there any plan on your budgets, you know, to spend some money, especially on these roads, you know, because these two roads are the main entrance, you know, for the back communities that we see, or, you know, a lot of people, traffic goes through those streets back to the, you know, Pearland High School and 35. Again, you know, we're just trying to echo our need for improvement, and we want to hear, you know, what maintenance plans or future budget items you guys have on the agenda to kind of help us out here.
Does that conclude your comments? Thank you so much for those comments, we appreciate it. If you have any photos, please remember to take your photos over to our city secretary, she can add those to the packet. Next, Mayor, we have Kenneth Bourgeois. I think I said that correctly. Please state your name and, all right. Please state your name and address for the record, and we appreciate you being here this evening. Timer is right up here for your convenience.
Okay. My name is Kenneth Bourgeois. I'm 3415 East Circle Drive, and we moved here in Pearland in 1983. I've been here 38 years. And during that period, for the first 18 years, we had no problems with water, no flooding, no threats of flooding or anything for 18 years. And then, one bright day on 2001, we had floodwaters come into the house, and I ended up with a claim against FEMA, claim number one. And then, in August 2017, same thing happened, same ritual, claim against FEMA for damages. And in between the 2001 and 2017, we had another happening of water in the house, but it was so little, it was seeping in the back primarily, and we elected not to report it to FEMA, just to go ahead and mop it up and pray to God it didn't screw up the walls and all the sheet rock and all that stuff. And it didn't. Fortunately, we were pretty lucky there. But we got two strikes against us now. We've hit FEMA twice, and I'm told that if you get, you hit FEMA three times, chances are very good that you're not going to get insurance in the future. And that's scary in itself. And just as you heard people mention, just recently in 2020, we had water up to the, right up to the door, and I guess our prayers paid off because the rain quit, and the water quickly drained right out of the yard, right down the ditches. And that's what we're facing. Every time there's a little rain, we don't sleep at night. I'm constantly going to the front door and seeing where the ditch is, and how much water's in it, and how much of it's in the yard now, and how close it's getting to my front door and my back door. And it's just not a way to live. So, we really do hope that you all can find your way clear to help us out, get us out of this problem, so we can live in peace for a while. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mayor, next, we have Kenny Urban. Please make your way to the podium. State your name and address for the record. Got a timer up here for your convenience, and thank you very much for joining us this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council. My name is Kenny Urban. I live at 3417 East Circle Drive, Pearland, Texas, 77581. This particular house, if you might even be able to see the shiny stuff below the house, that's water, okay? This is from the rainfall that occurred, December 31st of last year. So, I have a little bit of different history than these people. My dad had this house built in 1969, so I've lived here for a long, long time. I currently live in this house and have lived there for 30 years. So, over the years, we've had some pretty heavy rainfall and downpours and tropical storms and hurricanes. Until recently, we have not had any problems of water packing up into the yard where it's going to threaten the house. My dad, when he had this house built, was aware of elevation, had the house built up, and that's really kind of helped him a lot, helped us, keeping us from getting flooded. However, recently, and I guess it's only because of the development that's been occurring, this situation here was not a tropical storm, it was just a heavy rainfall. And this is very typical of what's occurring now. So, something has changed. There are, in our neighborhood, being that it's older, you're having people come in, buy houses, tear them down, build up the foundations and elevation, which, of course, causes more water flowing into the ditches once they back up. Of course, they back up in everybody's yard, and it affects us mainly on East and West Circles. And I don't know if you're aware of it, but those out there at those houses, they all have open ditches that just really hinder the water flow to the degree where everybody has been, at one point in time, flooded. The house that was mentioned before, that was elevated, they had, I mean, they had their whole foundation elevated, and they would have got their fourth flooding if they wouldn't have gotten that done. So, we just ask that y'all would really seriously consider looking into the situation and find out what's going on, and what we can do to, you know, correct the problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mayor, we have one final speaker.
Real quick, was that the final one on the, from the neighborhood over here?
Yes, sir.
Okay, real quick, just, I guess if staff could obviously take all of this under advisement, find out clearly there's something that's happened in the neighborhood, it's not dissimilar from like Leslie, some of our older neighborhoods that are large lot, open ditch, that we're having a problem, and maybe have public works, and some of our guys go out there and take a look at what we may see and ascertain as to some of our problem, and then maybe we can get a report back to council relatively soon in the first part of the year. I know it'll take a little bit to get some investigation on the lay of the land out there.
Mayor, can I just take a quick point, personal privilege for the group that's here about this drainage issue? We've got five hearings, those are going to go relatively, stick around. We're going to talk about your issue.
And I'll just add that we do appreciate you being here. It's very rare that I think I get to speak on behalf of the council, and I know you said you're a little bit nervous, but this is how we find out what's important to you. We are your representatives, so we truly do appreciate you joining us this evening. Next, Mayor, we have Diego Lopez. If you could please make your way to the podium. State your name and address for the record. And I believe he is speaking on behalf of an association, so if we could please put five minutes up there. Thank you for being here with us.
Good evening. Diego Lopez, 621 Shadow Cliff, Lake City, Texas. I am representing Pearland Professional Firefighter Association. Mayor, councilmen, city staff, thank you for hearing us out today. The past couple of years, the city of Pearland has moved towards becoming a high-performance organization. We believe as an association, this is a correct path forward for our citizens and for city employees. However, due to recent events, I now question whether we are on a path to our end values. Our work culture should be conducive to accomplishing our vision. The fire service is steep in tradition, especially when it comes to the culture. Over the past few months, our member have heard repeatedly that the fire department's culture is not in line with these values. I am here to say that the Pearland Fire Department's culture is exemplary and exceedingly better than any other fire department in the state of Texas. We have put faith in our city's policies, procedures, and staff. When we had a member who was wrongfully terminated and entered the appeals process, we trusted the process. An appeal hearing committee heard all the evidence and recommended the reversal of the termination, which was ultimately denied. We are left questioning why. It seems the investigation was done with bias and a lack of fairness. It has developed into low morale and fear in many of our members. Fear that we can be disciplined or terminated unjustly. In addition to the fire department, the appeal hearing committee members themselves fear retaliation from their recommendation, which is noted in their recommendation. City employees should not be in fear of consequences from upholding the city's own core values and doing what they feel is the right thing. During the appeal hearing that was held in these chambers, Pearland citizens, along with city employees, stood in that lobby. While we stood there quietly, we were asked to leave multiple times. We were even threatened with being arrested if we were being disruptive. We stood there and sat there quietly the entire time. We were not the ones that were being disruptive when asked to leave multiple times. Eventually, we were allowed to stay in the lobby. This is now how trust is developed or maintained. We stood in support of our member and the city to complete a fair and thorough process. I ask you today, are we on the path to being a high-performance organization? Along with the other city departments, our department, the fire department, upholds the city values. We can only hope the senior staff will as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Mayor, that's all that we have for general citizen comments. We do have two other speakers for specific items.
All right, sounds good and as mentioned earlier, thank you all for being here tonight. Thank you for the opportunity to come and address your counsel. That's how we find out things, as the mayor pro, mayor pro Tim mentioned, sometimes things that are most pressing to you. So we appreciate you being here tonight. We will take these under advisement and get some word back as to how we move forward, okay? With that, we'll move to public hearing number one. Purpose of this hearing is to receive public testimony regarding the detachment of a six-point-three-two acre tract located within the boundaries of Bressary County Municipal Utility District number twenty-two from the city's incorporated limits. We'll move forward with staff report for that.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. This particular item is an item that's been in the works for a while. This is specifically the purpose of this public hearing, as you just iterated to the public, is for the public hearing to detach some territory from the city that's currently in the city limits. And the area that we're looking at here, if you'll look at this map, you'll see a red line up there. It's on the very far southwest region of our ETJ. In that area, we have what's called a hundred-foot city limit strip. And that city limit strip, there's a development out there called the Lakes of Savannah. If anybody's been down Highway six, you've probably seen it. It's Friendswood Development Project, very successful development in that area. And that development is in the city's ETJ, but when the properties were platted, there were approximately forty-two lots that were platted in the city's one-hundred-foot city limit strip. So that created a little bit of a dilemma out there. So you have forty-two homes that are located in the city limits in an area that's really meant to be the city's ETJ. And so the purpose of this hearing is to consider the proposed disannexation of a portion of the city strip to get the homes that have been built out there outside of the city limit strip to be consistent with the remainder of the development, which is in the city's ETJ. And again, we have representatives here from the developer and also from the mud district. If the council has any specific questions, but that's again, the purpose of the public hearing and if you could go ahead and go to a more zoomed in, there's again, a zoomed in picture of the red area, which is what we're talking about. Again, we're talking about disannexing ninety-three feet of the city's hundred-foot strip. And then the next photo shows a little bit better picture of it with respect to the lots that are involved. Again, there are forty-two lots, of those forty-two lots, thirty-six of those residents out there have already petitioned the city for disannexation. The remaining six lots are owned by the developer or builder and those have also been signed petitions for disannexation there. Be happy to answer any questions you may have. One other comment, though, after this public hearing, there will be two items to follow that are action items. One is the first reading of the disannexation ordinance. Second reading would be at our next meeting, next Monday night. The other item is interlocal agreement that the city would be doing with the mud to account for, in the past, the mud district has been paying the taxes on these lots, on many of these lots in that area for the city portion. This is to essentially establish an escrow account in case there were any issues from past, from the past with respect to those lots that where taxes were paid by residents, it would exist to remedy that situation in case those unlikely events occurred.
All right, thank you, Mr. Coker, for that. We'll move forward to those wishing to speak for or against this proposed ordinance on disannexation. Go to the podium, give name and address and speak for the record. Second request for those wishing to speak in favor or against this action. Third and final time, seeing no one moving in that direction, to speak for or against. All right, we'll move forward to city council, those with questions, comments. Member Owens?
Yeah, I wondered, what's the reason for that, of being on that hundred-foot line? I mean, was it a survey, bad survey, or what?
No, I, to be honest with you, I don't know the specific answer to that question. I do know that the plats, when the property was platted, they were platted in, it was in the strip, but the strip was not delineated on there, so it didn't necessarily appear. And so those plats were approved and then it was subsequently realized what had happened. And so, but the problem is you had homes that were already being constructed by the time that had occurred.
What's the value loss of revenue for the city on taxation?
It's my understanding that you're looking at about thirty thousand dollars a year approximately that would be generated from that area. But again, the, otherwise, if this doesn't occur, the city's going to, would have to service those properties out there because they are in the city limits and that clearly was not the intent from the inception of that subdivision.
Service fire out there in that area?
No longer. The city used to provide fire service in that area. They've now since the mud district out there and the developer, they've contracted with a ESD.
What's the value on the forty-two homes that'll be built there?
The value of the homes, I don't know the answer to that, that's a question that maybe the developer can answer.
Is anybody here for that?
Yes, Brian Gibson with Friendswood Development is here. Yeah, if you don't mind, please step to the podium.
Brian Gibson, I'm representative of Friendswood Development Company. The homes are valued approximately two hundred and twenty-five to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Two hundred and sixty?
Two hundred and twenty-five to two hundred and fifty thousand.
On the forty-two homes to be built. What would be our hearing on the revenue based off of that if we didn't allow this?
I believe my, the estimate I indicated was around thirty thousand dollars annually.
Forty-two homes?
Is that, yeah, I believe so. And that's in the agreement that I referenced earlier, where the money's being escrowed, that's based upon the valuation of those homes and the taxes, what they would have been over a period of two years.
On that County Road fifty-eight coming off of there, going into that area out there, is there any opportunity to improve that road?
Yes, sir. We actually, when we started the development, there's an agreement with the city of Pearland to provide some funds for improvements to that road. For every home that's been constructed in Lakes of Savannah, there's been a dollar amount that's been contributed. For several years now, we've worked with, you know, the county, trying to get that to be a focus, but that's really a county project.
Especially at night and if it's raining, that road is a death trap, really. It's six or eight-foot ditches on either side of a two-lane road.
Hundred percent agree with you.
I would like to see if we go through with this, that someone reaches out and see if you can't develop that area down through there. The other part, they have to go down to Highway six and come back in the other way.
I do know that the county has bought up some properties through there to try to, you know, get ready for.
See what you can do to improve that road down through there. It's pretty dangerous roadway to go down through there in that area. Maybe you can work out some kind of agreement with the county to be able to upgrade that somewhat, you know, make the ditches out, put pipe in there or something on either side to do that, but it's a very dangerous, and my daughter lives down there in Rose Sharon area down through there. So when we go down and see them, we go all the way to Highway six and then come back through just to keep them going on that roadway there.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Member Perez?
Thank you, Mayor. So, on the south side of the subdivision, we don't, this issue does not persist, correct? It's just on this, on these forty-two lots?
That is correct.
Okay. So I don't have an objection to the de-annexation, we've been talking for a while. I guess based on the write-up, we'll be giving up all but seven feet, which was probably coincidental with the utilisment. And we have a, we have a proposed development agreement where they're going to relinquish any rights to city services, even though that they're still seven-foot, then I don't see anything objectional to it.
Any other questions? Member Kamkar?
Really quickly, city attorney, do they owe us any money right now? Anything outstanding? Any agreements or anything carryover items?
No.
Okay. And we're getting rid of the city of Pearland services, so they're going to contract for fire EMS, police from somebody else?
They are already contracting for the fire and EMS services from a separate ESD and then they will receive police services or sheriff from the Bressary County.
For the comment.
Any other questions, comments? Mayor Pro Tim?
Darren, this isn't, I'm assuming since we're retaining that seven feet, this isn't going to impact like establishing, establishing our ETJ or anything like that?
No, it will not. As a matter of fact, this is not unprecedented, we've actually done this in a couple of other areas, specifically in Water, I guess what was the original Southwick Muds of Muds two, three, and six in that area, we've had to do the same thing in a few areas where there were some homes where they were partially in the city limits and partially not.
Okay, cool. I've got nothing else, thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions, comments? All right, I think all the questions, my biggest question was making sure there was no break in our ETJ, so that wouldn't hurt us in the future. So with that, we will close this adopted public hearing number one and move to new business item number one. So, Member Orlando, would you place that on the table, please?
Consideration impossible action, first reading of ordinance number sixteen oh nine, so moved.
Second. We have a motion, a second, we've had staff report, questions, comments, we'll move to Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Motion carries six to zero to adopt resolution number R twenty-two-one-two-seven-six.
All right, moving to new business item number two, Member Carbone, would you place it on the table, please?
I will, but the motion you just read, I thought we were on sixteen oh nine.
The mayor just took the vote on ordinance sixteen oh nine on the first reading.
Right, but the city secretary announced a different ordinance.
Sixteen oh nine.
Oh, okay.
Consideration impossible action, resolution R twenty-two-one-two-seven-three, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, same thing, we've had a staff report, we'll move to Madam Secretary calling for the vote on it.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Motion carries to adopt resolution number R twenty-two-one-two-seven-three.
All right, moving to public hearing number two. Purpose of this public hearing is to receive public testimony regarding the abandonment of a right-of-way generally located west of State Highway thirty-five and south of Industrial Drive. With that, we'll move to staff report.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Once again, a public hearing, the last one was on disannexation, this is actually on the abandonment of an existing right-of-way. So if you'll look up here on the screen, as you can see, this is on Industrial Boulevard, which is just off of thirty-five, south of five-eighteen. And what we have, the red area is an existing dedicated right-of-way, the property owner to the west of that red area dedicated that to the city for a public right-of-way. And they've been working with the, actually, that property owner and the property to the east, Brask Neela, have been working with the city on possibly readjusting this right-of-way, moving it to a different area. We would be abandoning what you see in red and relocating that right-of-way to the area that's in orange, it says new right-of-way. Asking why would we be doing this at this time? And the purpose of doing this would be by moving the right-of-way to the west, what that does is it frees up an opportunity for the property owner to the east, Brask Neela, to proceed with the acquisition of property for a future expansion, but it also brings this, the right-of-way in line with the city's existing right-of-way just to the south of the proposed new right-of-way. So what it does is it creates a better alignment of the right-of-way. So the purpose of the public hearing is to receive public comment and testimony with respect to the abandonment of the current right-of-way and then creation of a new right-of-way. Just to let you know, there are two action items for this as well. The action items that would be presented to the council after this public hearing are, one, an ordinance abandoning the existing right-of-way and that ordinance is on there, is on tonight's agenda as a once and only reading, so it would require a supermajority of council to vote on that this evening. The second item that would be presented to council is a deed of exchange between the property owner that dedicated that right-of-way to the city and where we would be exchanging, giving that property back to that property owner in exchange for the new right-of-way that the city would be receiving.
That concludes staff report?
That concludes staff report, thank you.
All right, we're, move forward to those wishing to speak in favor or against this proposed item, can go to the podium, name and address in three minutes. Mr. Phillips? Hope you're doing well tonight. There you go. Me too, we're, me too, we're both in the same meeting, so.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Kenneth R. Phillips. I'm an attorney here in Pearland, so I'm appearing as a representative, in a representative capacity. I represent the owner to the east, Neelia LLC, who is represented here tonight by Mr. Ms. Bosky. They desire, or their company desires, to expand their existing facility to the west. It's going to require a significant amount of construction, it's going to provide significant jobs for the city. To do that, we need to have this realignment. There are a lot of benefits to the city for doing that, as Mr. Coker has said, the new right-of-way is going to line up with the existing right-of-way and it's going to allow the expansion to go forward, subject, of course, to a replat of the subdivision, which once this exchange is approved, if you approve it, would allow that to happen. And then it needs to be done by deed of exchange because the city owns the land and fee title, needs to be swapped by fee title so that the former owner of the property is restored to it and can sell and it can be insured. And speaking on behalf of the title company that's going to ensure that transaction, I really need them to own the land to be able to provide them with title insurance. And that's it. And if I have any, if you have any questions, I'm afraid to answer them.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Just make a second call for those wishing to speak in favor or against this proposed item. And last and final time, those wishing to speak in favor or against this proposed item. Seeing none, we'll move forward to city council, questions, comments, concerns?
Yeah, yes, Mayor, fully in support of abandoning the right-of-way. My only concern is there's going to be a residual effect that I think we need to clean up either in this meeting or subsequent meeting. Right now, the thoroughfare shows in alignment with that current right-of-way. We abandon that portion, the rest of it, I think, is going to be relatively useless. I think either as an amendment to this item if we can, or as a follow-up meeting in our next regular meeting, we need to have that, either that entire thoroughfare, a portion of the thoroughfare map abandoned, or it moved over into where we're realigning this new right-of-way. either that entire thoroughfare, uh, portion of the thoroughfare map abandoned, or it moved over into where we're realigning this new right of way. Uh, otherwise, we have a, uh, thoroughfare map that doesn't make a whole lot of sense. I don't know if we can pull it up, but the.
You're, you're speaking of our thoroughfare plan.
Exactly. So we, right now, the, the, this right of way aligns with our thoroughfare plan. So if we abandon this right of way, technically, when they plat for the expansion, we're going to have to require them to plat because it's a portion, it's a portion of the right of way. So we kind of have a hamster wheel effect. Um, without that portion of the right of way, the entire thoroughfare that lines up with it is useless. Um, rather than allowing that to continue, uh, I think we need to have a subsequent, uh, motion either tonight or in a separate meeting where we affect the change to the right of way map or to the thoroughfare plan.
Like, do you want to address?
Yeah, I, uh, I don't know that we have the issue you described, but I would suggest that, uh, if there is something we could take a look at it future, near term. Regardless, we clarified for you this week, but, uh, I, I don't believe, because we've looked at this pretty closely, that, that would be the effect, uh, you know, the thoroughfare plans for illustrative purposes, obviously, and this actually lines it up as was referenced and makes it a, a more realistic and a better alternative. But, uh, we'll, we'll double check what you said and, uh, report back to you.
Yeah, I'm just looking at what we have, uh, in our G I S currently shown for the thoroughfare, uh, plan. And then typically, we've used that as a tool for right of way taking. I, I don't think it's a huge deal. I just want to make sure that was, we abandoned the, uh, this right of way, there's not this residual, uh, thoroughfare plan. As anybody tries to plat south of it, they're going to have to dedicate right of way to a road that can't connect. So it's a, it's a simple matter. I just want to make sure that we do it, uh, as, if we can't do it immediately after, which sounds like staff needs a little bit more time, maybe the next regular meeting, we can just have that right of way shifted over to align with the new, uh, proposed right of way.
Just for expectations, uh, next meeting's in a week, so if we could, let's, I don't think there's a brush, so we'll bring that in. If it needs to come back, we'll bring in January, so.
Yeah, I think, uh, right of way, you know, on our thoroughfare plan, it's just, uh, I think that's more than just a one meeting thing. I think it has to go through a public hearing and it's, it's, it's part of the thoroughfare plan. But I think it's noted and I think it's a good, it's a good note, but typically, it's just a dotted line, meaning we need a thoroughfare that goes from this point A to point B. We're, we're lining that up. So I think we're covered if for some reason something were to happen.
Generally, the, the only difficulty is, and it's not, if we don't clean it up, it's a residual problem for the future. We use that as a tool to state when you're, if you're dedicating via plat, you're required to give us right of way in accordance with the thoroughfare plan. So by abandoning this right of way, we're abandoning that thoroughfare. We need to move the thoroughfare so that we don't have, if we forget about it in, say, a couple of years, then we're forcing somebody to dedicate right of way. We've already said we don't want it.
Right. Member Kamkar?
Uh, just really briefly, I, I want to thank the staff and, uh, the families and the, the companies involved. They, they got around this pretty quickly. They're trying to move forward and, uh, it's really nice to see government in this issue work efficiently to try to resolve something that becomes a win-win. So just thank you for, for working with us and, and thanks for the staff for making that happen.
Any, any other comments, questions? All right, seeing, um, seeing none, we will close this public hearing, move to new business item number three. Mayor Pro Tim, would you place that on the table?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Consideration possible action, first and only reading of ordinance number one six one zero, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, Mr. Coker, you mentioned super majority in that of those present, or is that of the council?
It's going to be those present in voting.
This would be five of the six?
We're going to.
Okay, all right. So with that, we'll move to, uh, Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Motion carries six to zero.
All right, with that, Member Kamkar, uh, place item number four on the table, please.
To consideration possible action, resolution number R two zero two one dash two seven four, so moved.
Second. Second.
Two, uh, big seconds, all right. Does somebody want to third it and fourth it? Anyway, uh, with that, uh, we had discussion, staff reports, and Madam Secretary will call for the vote.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
The motion carries six to zero to adopt resolution number R twenty twenty-one dash two seven four.
All right, good thing. I don't want to echo, uh, what Member Kamkar said, Mr. Phillips and your party, as well as the other parties involved. Thank you for getting on this quick and hopefully we can, uh, affect, uh, a good expansion of a, of a great business in our community over there. So really do appreciate it. Uh, we'll move to public hearing number three. Purpose for this hearing is a request by Monica Fontenot Poindexter, Chesterfield Development Services, applicant on behalf of Freeman T. and Ali A. Weisch the second owner, for an approval of zone change from General Business GB to single family residential R one district on approximately five point nine one three six acres of land, located at eighty-three thirty-five Fight Road. With that, uh, we'll move to the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the city council, uh, good evening. Uh, this zone change number twenty-one dash zero 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 twenty is a request for approval of a zoning change from the General Business GB district to the single family residential R one district on approximately five point nine, uh, acres of land located at eight, eighty-three thirty-five Fight Road. That's the, near the northwest corner of Fight Road and Cullen Parkway. Uh, this is the zoning map and it shows the property, uh, Zone General Business, and it's at this location, the, the northwest corner of Fight and Cullen Parkway. Staff did not receive any, uh, public comments regarding this request. Uh, this property is also designated, uh, for retail offices and services by the Future Land Use Plan. And I do have, um, a location map that shows adjacent properties. You can see there's a residential subdivision to the east, uh, Office Park to the north, and, uh, mixed, uh, commercial on, uh, the east and residential subdivision to the south. Uh, again, the intent of the applicant is to rezone this property to residential to accommodate a future residential subdivision on the subject property. Uh, the planning, uh, this is a view of the property. There's an existing home on the subject property. Uh, it's been that way since, uh, believe two thousand. And the Planning Zoning Commission conducted a public hearing and discussed this, uh, proposed zone change at their November fifteen, uh, regular meeting, and the commission voted to recommend approval of the requested change from GB to R one by vote of, uh, five to zero. And that's the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mohammed, for that staff report. Uh, moving to the applicant, uh, presentation or report, is Monica Fontenot available? There she is. Thank you, welcome, uh, city council tonight. If you'll give your name and address for the record and, uh, give your applicant presentation, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to present. My name is Monica Fontenot, and that's twenty-two oh one Caroline in Houston, Texas. I represent the owners, the Weisch, and they bought this property, this five point nine, uh, one three six acre tract in nineteen, uh, seventy-nine? I'm sorry, yeah, ninety-seven, with the intent of living there and making it residential. They have a twelve hundred, uh, square foot home on that site presently. And with the other half of the property, they'd like to develop it and make it three acres closest to Cullen Parkway. They'd like to develop that property and make it a, uh, R one residential area with six to eight homes, eighty-eight hundred square feet or more. They're really leaning toward, uh, ten thousand square feet. So on this particular, uh, area, this property, although they bought it in ninety-seven, it wasn't, you know, the annexation of this area also happened in nineteen ninety-seven. They developed their property to build the home in two thousand and one, but this property did not become known as general business until two thousand and six. And the area next door that you see, the planned development, uh, Pearland Estates, um, came into existence in twenty fourteen, and it is, uh, designated as, uh, R three. And right across the street, as you can see, that development is R two. So, um, having this development rezoned as R one would fit what's already happening in the area. There's plenty of areas, uh, that around them that are designated residential. Now, this particular, uh, property also, as you can see, most of those, most of the property that's considered general business faces Cullen Parkway, and so that benefits them. So if this were to remain general business, it's such low traffic area that it's not going to really support that. Plus, if you continue down Fight Road, that road becomes, um, it kind of dead ends into undeveloped land. And so it would be a better use of the land to support the owner's desires to make the property R one residential so that they can, you know, beautify it, raise the, uh, property value there in that area. And you know what happens when you start dividing property and selling it as it relates to the council and how it works well for you, right? So I appreciate this opportunity to make this presentation this evening, and we, um, thank you in advance for your favorable consideration of this request.
All right, thank you, Ms. Monica, for that. Uh, moving forward in our public hearing, uh, seeking those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. Go to the podium, name and address, uh, three minutes. Second request for those wishing to speak in favor or against this pro, proposed request. And then last and final time, those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. Seeing none, moving in that direction, we'll move it to city council, questions, comments, concerns? Anybody have a question? Member Carbone?
It's the only question to staff is, you can see the subject property outlined in red. Is there some sort of road or easement on there with the, the north-south divide?
Uh, no, that's just, uh, I think it's a glitch on our map. Uh, there is no right of way there.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other question, comments?
Yes, I just, thank you. Um, where is the, the, clearly, there's five acres here, there's a small house, now it's going to be developed. Uh, where are these developed flows going?
Sir, what's the question, Mr. Carbone?
Uh, where, what direction are the developed flows going? If you're going to put, I'm guessing, ten more houses, fifty more houses, you've got large detention ponds almost in this visual here, even as imperfect as it is. Are they going to put a gigantic detention pond on site? I mean, we have, you know, ten people here who are talking about, we're changing the, uh, the topography, and where is the water going?
Phil, so we, we don't have a site, I mean, there's preliminary site plans, but the, um, the question of the actual development doesn't come up till it's submitted, we look at it, right? This, this is about a use. And so whatever the final design plan will have to meet the city's requirements, including detention, uh, and drainage. So, um, that will be looked at and reviewed by our engineering staff, uh, at such time that they submit an application for development.
That's like a really long-winded way of saying, I don't know.
Well, we, we, sir, we don't look at that for zoning.
I just, I just asking a question. I'm sorry, I apologize, I'm asking a pointed question. I understand, I, I am pro-American dream, I work in land development, I am very much pro-housing, but it's, I've, I've started to question, you know, where does the water go? And that becomes a critical path item for me. So I, I'm indeterminate now on where I am, but I think that's a concern.
Any other questions, comments?
Uh, yeah, Mayor, I think it, I think it's important to note, um, you know, we're, we're, we're looking at, you know, whether this tract is appropriate for the, for the, for the zone. The site plan's kind of independent. Um, you know, if it was one lot or ten lots, we think it's appropriate there. Uh, from that perspective and in keeping with what, uh, staff's, uh, recommendation for approval and with E D C.'s recommendation of approval, uh, I think I'm comfortable with it. Uh, they do have a site plan showing generally that they intend to utilize an existing drainage on. They'll be required to, to meet the criteria. Uh, whether they develop it commercial or residential, they still have the same issue. So, um, you know, I, I don't want to mix too much, uh, with respect to what we're, we're proving here, which is just, is, do we deem this use appropriate in this location? And I think that's, uh, in this case, kind of with the surrounding area, uh, the home next door to it, uh, I think it's an appropriate, uh, change in zone. All I have, Mayor.
All right, any other questions, comments? All right, seeing none, we will close the, uh, public hearing and move to new business item number five. Member Perez, would you, uh, place number five on the table, please?
As you wish, Mayor. Consideration possible action, uh, resolution number R two thousand M dash two two one, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, any other questions, comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary will call for the vote.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
No.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
The motion carries five to one.
All right, we'll move forward in our agenda, public hearing number four. This is a public hearing, a request of Sandra Pinalis Williams, applicant on behalf of Retail Oak Forest One LLC, owner for approval of a conditional use permit, C U P for liquor package store, uh, within the General Commercial G C district to accommodate a liquor store with an existing multi-tenant retail center on approximately one point six four acres of land, located at fifty-seven thirty Broadway Street, suite one twelve. Uh, with that, we will move to the staff presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so this, uh, conditional use permit, uh, number thirty-three is for approval of conditional use permit, as you stated, for liquor slash package store use within the General Commercial, uh, G C district, accommodate a liquor store with an existing, uh, lease space in a multi-tenant retail center located at fifty-seven thirty Broadway Street, suite number is one twelve. Uh, the applicant, uh, seeks the approval of this use permit to accommodate, as I said, for a liquor store, uh, within this lease space. And, uh, staff has not received any, uh, public comments regarding this request. This zoning map shows the property, uh, location, and with the zoning being general commercial. And the Future Land Use Plan, uh, designates, uh, this property for, um, business commercial. And this is, uh, this diagram shows, uh, the current, uh, lease, leases and, uh, roster, uh, tenant roster within the shopping center. And, uh, this is just a view of that existing, uh, shopping center on, uh, the property. Uh, the Planning Zoning Commission, uh, conducted a public hearing and discussed this C U P request during November fifteen, uh, regular meeting. And the members were, uh, three of the members expressed support for the request. Uh, one member was, uh, opposed and one member wasn't decided. And that's the staff report, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mohammed. We'll move forward, is the applicant present? There, if you could, do you have a applicant presentation? Sure, if you, uh, just go to the podium and give your name and address for the record and, uh, give your, give your presentation. Thank you.
My name is Sandra Pinalis Williams. Um, address is eighty-six eighteen Sable Cliff Lane, Houston, Texas. Once the COVID hit, which caused the pandemic, I lost my job as a sales consultant. Um, I worked for a company called Hardee's Fresh Foods, and working for that company, it allowed me to grow relationships with customers from Conroe all the way to Beaumont. So I had a variety of different customers. So in losing my job, my husband suggested we open a family business. Yes, it is a liquor store, but it won't be your typical ordinary liquor store. Um, me having twenty-five years' experience in customer service and management, that'll allow me to cater to the community. It'll give customer services the key. That's my background. People buy from who they like. You know, I'm going to build relationships, um, which equal return, return customers. I'm going to make it a fun experience, cater to the locals. Uh, we're going to make, you know, your demographic needs as far as what you'd like at that particular liquor store. Um, I've already contacted two local businesses and they're excited the fact that we're going to come on board, or trying to at least, because we're going to also have a distributor's license, which will allow us to deliver liquor to local businesses if need be. Um, we do have family that live here in Pearland, and our goal is to as well move into Pearland. Um, and once the store becomes successful, we plan on opening other. Um, and once the store becomes successful, we plan on opening other businesses throughout the city. Uh, nearest liquor store is about two miles away from where we at. Um, where it's at, right across the street, it's, um, Bayway Chevrolet Dealership. Um, and what else? The planning department has already approved and verified that we're within the guidelines. So there are, you know, it's not near a school or a church or anything. Um, and yeah, just wanted to thank the committee for hearing us out, and thank you.
All right. Thank you for that. Uh, we will move forward in our public hearing. Those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request, go to the podium and give your name and address for the record. Mr. Stahlheber had signed up to speak. You're, you're, yeah. You look more comfortable.
My name is Wayne Stahlheber, 5706 Broadway, Pearland, Texas. I've been here since 1965. And, um, what I see happening in Pearland as I drive through these days, I see, uh, yeah, I did some, a little bit of checking, there's four to five liquor stores within five miles of this area. I just don't, when I, when I see that, when I, when I look at it, it just, that's not what we're looking for in Pearland, in my opinion. I see pawn shops, I see liquor stores, and I just don't think that's the look that we're going for to continue to watch Pearland grow. So, and I would be, I'm, so I'm just opposed for that reason.
All right. Thank you. Uh, those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request? Just wanted to make sure.
Bye, Freddie.
Bye, Freddie. All right. We'll make a second, uh, request for those wishing to speak, uh, in favor or against this proposed request. And third and final time, those wishing to speak in favor or against this proposed request. Seeing none, we'll move forward in the, uh, public hearing to questions, comments, concerns from City Council. Mayor Owens?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's, that's good. He's trying to take my mic away from me. Yeah, yeah. Uh, your short answer is no. Uh, and you're right. Uh, and Steph, the last time we had this, I not only asked for the radius of the five miles, how many liquor stores, but also how many liquor stores we have in Pearland now on there. And, uh, I've only, uh, voted for one by mistake since I've been up here for 17 years. I don't think, you know, Pearland doesn't need any more liquor stores, uh, to be honest with you. Get another business, uh, for God's sakes, you know, to, to do that. You know, if you, if you look at it, you know, through there, I'm glad you put that up, that, uh, you know, if you go through and you look at the Alcohol Anonymous and stuff like that, and especially the, the younger kids, the thing of it is, is, is people at a young age drink to get a high. And when they can't reach that high, then they go to marijuana or cocaine. And, uh, and, you know, I just think Pearland is a lot better city, we've, you know, for, for that. We've, uh, got quite a few of the liquor stores in here, and, uh, I don't think we need any more. I won't vote for this one, it's just not, not something I'm gonna, gonna vote for anymore on here. And, uh, like I said, I only let one slip through here, uh, about a month ago. Uh, but I thought that I was voting on amendment, and I wouldn't. But, so, uh, that's the short answer. The long answer is no again. So appreciate it, uh, wanting to open business here, but find something else. There's plenty of other things in Pearland that we need other than liquor stores, really do. And I'd like for y'all to come here to, to open a business here, and appreciate that.
All right. Those, any other questions, comments?
Uh, I would just say, I'm, I'm, I'm fully in support of it. I'm on, I'm gonna open my own liquor store and call it Woody's after a week. Uh, I, I mean, have you considered the name? Because it's open. I don't think there's another Woody's in the place. But, uh, look, I, you.
Classic line.
I don't speak my herself, but we didn't, uh, the citizens did vote to have liquor stores, off-premise, uh, off-premise liquor stores. I think it's an appropriate location. Um, you know, I'm glad you're willing to do business with us, um, and I'm gonna vote for it, uh, I'll support you. I don't, I don't drink liquor, so I probably won't, uh, patronize your place, but I'll wave as I drive by. So, best of luck.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
First of all, uh, I want to thank you guys for wanting to open a business here. Uh, COVID has not been friendly and has been tough for all of us. I know folks have been unemployed, things have slowed down in my business, and life kind of deals you, uh, a deck of cards you don't like and a hand you don't like, and you gotta sometimes reshuffle. So first of all, I am extremely sympathetic to that, um, especially as we still have people dealing with that even today. Um, I'm, I'm not as brusque as some of my compatriots here, uh, but I will say, I, I have been ideologically consistent on this. Um, a, a city has uses that are allowed, and a city also gets to decide what it wants to be and not be, and what it wants to allow and not allow. And, and that's part of the vision of where are we going to in the five, 10, 15, 20-year plan. Uh, I'm, I think there are a lot of, of stores that, that address this need, uh, and I, I have not yet approved one, being a year on the council, um, and this will not be the, the one that, that starts that trend. But, uh, I am deeply glad that you guys are at least considering here, and if this came on your list. Uh, I really do wish, uh, the best. We are trying to promote more entrepreneurship. This council has worked really hard approving items to bring people of business, to bring diversity here, to bring a diversity of businesses. Uh, I am open for just about anything else, but probably this item. Uh, but thank you, I appreciate the time and effort that you guys have put into this, and I wish you the best.
Thank you.
So I guess I'll explain why I'm going to be a no this evening. It's, uh, one of the carve-outs that I have. I think we've gotten to a place to where I think we do have, uh, enough liquor stores here in the city. And I will say also that part of the reasoning behind, uh, my no this evening is, I, I feel like every liquor store that we've had, I initially was voting, okay, you know, let them, let them go. I think, you know, the, like, uh, Member Perez said, the voter said, all right, let's have them. And then they came, and the floodgates were open, they started coming to the city. Um, but honestly, every single liquor store that came before us, or CUP that came before us for liquor store, they said, yeah, I'm going to be different, we're going to be involved. And I really haven't, um, seen that there's been a big difference from one to the other. And, and in fact, I think, you know, it's been kind of just, you know, another liquor store. I'm not saying that that's, you know, necessarily the case, but it's, it's become one of my, uh, my carve-outs. Member Cam Carr touched on another point of just, you know, placemaking and thinking about what Pear, Pearland will be in the future, kind of what, uh, we're setting the city up to, to become. And when people think of Pearland, we want to put that, that stamp real firmly in their mind of who we are as a, as a city. And, um, so, you know, I sympathize. I, I was a business, a small business owner here for 12 years. I know it's really hard. Um, it's also really hard to just kind of, you know, get into the day-to-day and you, you know, all the things that you wanted to do become really, really difficult to manage. Um, I, I hope that, um, you do find success, whether we vote yes or no tonight. I don't know which way it's going to go. Um, but, um, you know, I, I wish you the best regardless of the outcome this evening. Thank you for being here.
Member Carbone?
Yep, thank you, Mayor. Not a big fan of liquor stores, but I'm, uh, a fan of property rights. And, I mean, we're looking at this strip center that's what, almost 50% vacant? Yeah, so, uh, when, when there's a tie, I mean, I, I have a hard time telling somebody, no, you can't lease to this tenant. Um, it, it's, I think it was a, a retail establishment, um, as we've seen before, you're going to go in and, and stock the shelves. And I, I wish you the best, I hope it works. We've, we've seen the free market play out. And if, if you offer a, a product and service the market likes, then you'll be rewarded. If not, you won't. You won't be around. That's what I love about it. It's, uh, so I, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, uh, I'm gonna be supportive of it and wish you the best.
Thank you, Mayor. I think this is a really important issue and one that touches on a lot of different items that have already come up and will continue to come up in the future. And I, I think I have a little bit different of a perspective than kind of any that's been expressed up here so far, so I just want to expound on that. I don't like CUPs, really. I, I, I don't think that, I, I don't think they're, they're good. I think they have a place in our city, and I think we should try to use them in a rather, i- in a, a limited targeted way, and I, I think there's a, a time and a place for them. I think generally, the, the folks that are elected up here should get feedback from their constituents and then set the standards in place for what kind of development they want in Pearland. And then we should enforce those rules. And so, um, Mr. Stahlheber, I, I agree with a lot of your comments, what you were saying. And I actually, tonight, we have our Planning and Zoning Committee, uh, considering a proposal from Councilmember Owens and I, that's relating to specifically vape shops, uh, alternative financial institutions like payday loans, um, self-storage facilities, places that are considered rather undesirable and, and take up space and, and contribute to a, some would say decline in the community. But as it stands, you have a right in a lot of places to go and open them, and I don't know that we've necessarily been very clear. And so we have these type of businesses come, and it's a, a fight up here, and it's, the reason I don't like the CUP process is, I don't, I don't think it's, I, I don't think it is a good way for government to make decisions, that it's just the, the eight of us up here that get to say, based on how we're feeling that day, based on whether or not we thought the applicant was friendly or not, uh, any of these features, um, do we want to approve or deny the business? I, I, I think that injects too much of the uncertain human element. I think we should be very clear up here, and, and where, I guess I disagree a, a little bit philosophically with Member Carbone is, I think that a city and, and a community has the right to set these standards in place for what kind of place I want to be in. And I, I agree with that fully, and I'm proposing rules to do just that. But i- if those standards aren't in place, and it's just, hey, a, a kind of a crapshoot of who's up here, do we have an absence or not? And that's going to determine somebody's livelihood? I, I don't love that, and I want to put in place clear standards. And so we have had a lot of liquor stores up here. I, I tend to not dislike liquor stores as, as much as I dislike a vape shop or a payday loan place. I, I think we could look into rules around, you know, along certain corridors, we don't want a, a ton more liquor stores. I, I, I think that's very appropriate, and I think we can and, and should, and, and as a city, regardless of the property rights component, we also have the, the rights of everyone in the community to shape the, the city that they live in. And I think that would be appropriate to look into. As it stands in, in this case, I, like they said, they, they followed the rules, and we have been, we have given mixed signals. We approve some of these and we, we, we disapprove some of these. So I think this is a, a really clear example of why we need to move towards a standard of, of saying, hey, let's, let's have one debate, hash out what kind of regulations we want to put on certain businesses and what kind we want on others, and then just enforce that, um, as strictly as possible. And, and I, I think there's issues on the enforcement piece, too. So I'm going to be for it, sorry for the suspense there. I, I'm going to be for it. But I, I think that, that it's just important to go down that discussion, because this is something that we're going to be discussing, that's being discussed right now by the Planning and Zoning Committee, it's going to continue to be discussed. We're doing a comprehensive plan, and then we'll rewrite our land use plan for the city of Pearland. So this is going to be a huge thing, I guess I would say, over the next year, over the next two years. And so I, I think it's important to lay out, how do we get to a good place? And so it, I, I agree, I, I'd be open to considering some additional rules on, on liquor stores and, and where they can be placed. In this instance, with the rules as they are, I, I will be supportive of this. So thank you for going through this.
All right. Good deal. So I'm going to be the deciding vote tonight. And, um, I'm probably going to be a no on this. And again, I, I didn't even support the, uh, initiative to allow liquor stores in town. And so, uh, because of the opportunity for a liquor store to just pop up on every, on every corner. Uh, I do think, and I, and I agree with, uh, with what many of our, uh, council have said over the past, that we want to get to a, if it's going to be a no, we want it to be a cheap no, we want it to be as quickly as possible so people can move on. If it's a yes, then they have more to do. And I think that is the rule that we've been following, and, um, I don't believe our, uh, staff has given any, you know, uh, opportunity to them to say, this is an automatic go, it's got to go to council and, and those types of things. And so I'm going to be a no tonight. I know Member Owens has another question.
You know, the thing about it, uh, Mayor, that, uh, I see on here within a five-mile radius, you got, uh, you got five liquor stores. I mean, you know, the thing about, and I can see people coming in, wanting to start a business. Each down here, their building's gone, as they built, uh, down here, their liquor store, it's gone. You know, it's, it's just, how many do we need? You know, content is what it amounts to. You know, I don't think that, uh, we need that many. And this, this is just a five-mile radius where you, where you're looking at, uh, a, a building yours there or taking a space there. That doesn't reach all the way down to the east side over here to where, you know, you got everything coming up, you got Pearland Liquor, you got, uh, liquor on, on Pearland Parkway, you know, right over here at Old Alvin.
Member Owens?
You got it?
Do you have anything new from what you said earlier?
Yeah, I do, I do. It, it's just, you know, at some point in time, you have to say, well, how many do we need of this? You know, how many do we need? I mean, we don't know, need for the city to be known as a liquor station, you know, I mean.
I know. Can I, can I just ask a quick point of information? Um, it's, it's an actual question, I also think it just kind of illustrates a point. We have a member absent, Member Little, that has routinely been a yes vote on liquor stores. So I, I get, like, this just kind of shows, like, the rent, he's on vacation with his wife, and so these folks who are here, like, don't get to open their business that they planned. So I guess my point of information is, what is the process? I voted against something before, and it came back up here, um, the next month and got approved when we had a, a switch of the members. Are they able to come back when we have a full council? Do they have to pay the fee again? I guess what is the process for that?
So, uh, this particular item, as you know, it's, it's a one, it's a one-time, it's a, it's a resolution essentially.
Right. I guess I'm, I'm illustrating that how just random it could be, but could they come?
No, I think that to, to answer that question specifically, if a council member wanted to do that, uh, to, to wait until you had a full complement of council members that were in attendance at the meeting, it would be up to the council to, uh, make a motion to, to postpone the item to the next agenda, to see if council member, when a council member would be present, if you wanted the full.
I'll second it. You can throw it down. We, we, we got to get to the new business item number six before we can do it. We're just in the public hearing at this point. So, uh, it's, it's a good point, it's a fair point. But we'll move forward.
I, I would just say, maybe as a, um, as a counter, and I, I respect everybody's opinion, I appreciate it. The CUP process, as with zoning, as with government, is imperfect. We've cleaned it up a little bit, but there's no way to perfect it. Uh, and we end up with these situations, um, a couple of nervous people with their livelihoods on the line, waiting for us to make some decisions that, on what I would consider personally, and again, all respect to those who've opined, somewhat arbitrary, uh, an arbitrary basis. I will tell you, I, I did not support the referendum, I did not vote for the referendum, I did not actively go out there and campaign for the referendum, but I do believe that the citizens by a, um, a seven to three margin told us, this is what they want. I mean, it, they, they, it was very clear, it wasn't even close, uh, in the vote, and it was a pretty good turnout. So, you know, the, with respect to the proximity of other liquor stores, we've got a lot of businesses that are allowed by right, that's not a factor. Um, there's a lot of other businesses that certainly the citizens have told us, they believe are a bit of an eyesore, nail salons, um, mattress stores, we've heard that, uh, and that will modify as time goes. But, you know, to Member, uh, Member Orlando's point, is there a practical reason why this should not be here? And with people's livelihoods on the line, you know, I would compel us to come up with a, a standard, at least in this vote, where we, where we have some consternation about it, but is there a standard that we can all agree to? Where should these be located? Uh, and, and can we give that guidance so there, it's not as arbitrary? In this case, I, I don't know that there's a better location. It's dead in the center of town, there's not a house around it, there's not a school around it, there's not a church around it. Uh, I mean, there really isn't one right next door to it, if we want to use that as a standard. I mean, look, CVS and Walgreens sell beer, and they're right across the street from each other most of the time. So I, I don't think that that's really a standard that we have to hold to. So, um, I, I don't want to compel anybody, if your heart's in, in a no, uh, and that's, that's where you believe, you know, I don't fault you for that, if that's what you believe. But I, I think maybe if we take a little bit more time and think, you know, is there a standard here? If we are truly conservative with our respect to property rights and allowing businesses to move forward, and allowing the market to do as it should, let's maybe give a little bit more, a little bit more thought and understanding the impact of, if we just say, well, I just don't feel this is okay, you know, I think maybe a higher level of rationale for people whose livelihoods are on the line.
And if I could just add one quick thing, I agree with almost everything Member Perez said there, I just think we should draw a distinction of what the conservative principle at stake here is. To me, it's less about property rights and more about rule of law. I think that we do have the ability to, as a community, shape the kind of community we want to be in. And is that going to impact property rights sometimes? Yes. But I think you have to have a clear, fair standard, that's not arbitrary, that doesn't inject so many personal biases. Again, it's never going to be perfect, but to the extent we can avoid that, and I think we can, I think that's good. So, but I think you're right. I would just say, use rule of law to get to a clear standard eventually.
You know, the reason you got it in the first place, and going back to what you said, Costco wanted a liquor store. And what they did, they gave a boatload of money to the chamber, and they put out kids to go around to get signatures to get it through. So, that's the reason that we've got it, is because Costco's wanted a liquor store where they're at. And that's how, that's how it got there, and how they got it approved, and how, you know, the money that they put in it.
Yeah, follow the law, follow the thing, and put it in front of the voters. And you're right, the voters overwhelmingly approved it. As a part of that was, it would be a part of the zoning standards, it would be a part of what we, as a community, can decide when and where they go, and which is exactly what we're doing here tonight. So, the process itself has been rolling out and working. Sometimes we've approved one, sometimes we haven't. So, with that, I'm going to call a close to this documented public hearing, and we will move to new business item number six. Member Owens, where do you, would you place new business item number six on the table?
Consideration Possible Action Resolution Number R 2021-CUP, 21-0033. I still move.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Did we hear a possible motion to postpone?
Yeah, Mayor, I would like to make a motion to postpone this to the, Aaron, when I say the next regular meeting, or the next regular meeting where there's a full?
Well, of course, I don't know who will or will not be here. It's my understanding, we, that Councilmember Little had indicated he would not be here to this evening, but we have not received such notification for next Monday night's meeting, so.
I would like to make a motion to postpone this item until the next city council meeting on next month.
December the 13th.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. That is not debatable, so with that, we will, Madam Secretary will call for the vote on the postponement vote.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbon?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens? The motion carries five to one, to postpone to December 13th.
So, so we've got an applicant that's wondering what just happened. So, point of, point of privilege and a point of information real quick, so we have postponed the actual vote until next Monday night, when hopefully we have a full council here, okay? So, we'll see you next Monday night, and we'll see where we go next week, all right? Thank you for being here tonight, thank you for that. So, with that, we will move forward in our agenda, the consent agenda, I believe. Anybody have anything to be pulled?
Remember Owens wanted to pull Bravo and Delta?
B and D. Bravo and Delta. Anything else? Seeing none, we will move back around. Member Orlando, we'll go A through D, with the exception of B and D.
All right. So, consideration possible action on the consent agenda items A and C, so moved.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary will call for that vote.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbon? Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
The motion carries six to zero to adopt consent items A and C.
All right, with that, we'll move forward to new business, item number seven. Member Carbon, would you place that on the table, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration Possible Action Resolution R 2021-121.1, so moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Staff report.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Upton has a presentation, just to bring everybody up to speed and on the level set on the item before you hear, so.
Mr. Pearson, I believe, oh, thank you, I'm sorry, I'll get that squared away. There we are, fantastic, thank you. Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. This item, as we have come back before, from our previous discussion, is to provide an update to the stormwater utility fee. We'll go through and talk about, a little bit about the purpose again, talk about our desired outcomes. October 25th, we had our council meeting with you all to discuss and have some input from you. We'll recap those events. We'll talk about the ballot language, the pro forma that has been reworked with regards to input from October 25th, and then our next steps. So, again, our stormwater utility fee, our background is that the purpose of the fee is to create a utility, to create the utility is to provide a dedicated identifiable revenue and expenditure mechanism to construct capital projects and improve drainage enhanced beyond the city's existing, current, existing and current maintenance and operation. So, as we know, as any goal of floodplain and stormwater management is to improve and maintain drainage for the protection of life and property. The city continues to receive unfunded mandates regarding stormwater. This is evident in our stormwater management plan, which is a five-year permit that comes from the state. As our city has now grown above 100,000 in population, we'll be moving up to the next level during our next renewal period, which will require additional monitoring and testing. And then, with storm events have shown the need for enhanced maintenance, and also with capacity for existing and new infrastructure, this fee will help us create the ability to address localized drainage concerns also in a more responsive time. Then, during those desired outcomes, during Hurricane Harvey, we identified many projects throughout the city, those including drainage projects, and then also roadside ditches, et cetera, to take a look at, and this would provide a funding mechanism. Due to limited funding limitations, most projects currently are not able to be addressed. Staff has identified projects that are too large for staff levels, but then also, those projects include items such as roadside ditch maintenance, culvert replacement, or enclosed pipe maintenance. But without the added maintenance activities, the infrastructure has continued to grow. We will continually have reduced capacity. We will continue to be a reactive mode versus a proactive mode. And as we've mentioned before, general fund is limited funding for maintenance activities, zero funds for small capital projects, those that are too big for the operations and maintenance side, but too small potentially for a full capital project. And due to fiscal year '22 constraints, there are no additional funding opportunities for these small drainage projects. What we have here was the ballot language as adopted on May 7th in 2022. I'm sorry, I apologize, I misread that. Resolution 2021, 121, on June 14th, 2021 is when it was adopted and approved, and then we'd looked at submission to the voters on May 7th of 2022. During our meeting with you in October 25th, we talked about our funding allocation. The direction looking at is that current operations and maintenance remains in the general fund. We utilize new revenue for unfunded mandates, enhanced maintenance activities, and capital drainage projects. This results in about 80% funding for projects and about 20% for enhanced maintenance activities. We revised the pro forma in the five-year capital program. Also addition was a request to have the ballot language to restrict fee increases to the CPI, or consumer price index, construction price index. So, what you have in front of you right now currently is the pro forma that we took a look at, at the $5 fee, taking a look at running around that 80/20 split. With that, we also went forth with our bond council, and at the bottom, you will notice that, taking a look at approximately $2 million for bond projects, or what I say, large projects to go for debt service, would result in about $32 million, and then an additional million dollars the following year, another $16 million for about $48 million of debt service funding projects. We'd also taken a look at providing those enhanced services, those being enclosed cleaning, enclosed pipe cleaning crew and video inspection, water quality and testing, additional and enhanced ditch cleaning. As you'll note, is that the value and quantity of our ditch, roadside ditches, it would help us reduce from maybe once every 32 years to about once every 16 years, be able to clean those ditches. With that, we took a look, and with regards to the ability to debt finance, increase the number of projects, the yellow ones identified there are currently identified and funded in our current CIP project, five-year capital program. The ones in green highlighted there are additional projects that we've identified, either through Harvey, through Citizen Concerns, and through staff evaluation. These are projects now identified or draft, they are in the plan, are preliminary with, preliminary costs developed, and as we go forward or move forward with this, if we should, further investigation, further valuation, further vetting, and a detailed analysis would be required. What we have here is we've identified the entire city and taken a look at all of our drainage infrastructure, those being in blue would be our underground storm system, green is our roadside ditch program. With that, there's some yellow in here, which is a hybrid, which is meaning that we have a underground system, and then a swale or roadside ditch on top to inlets that would flow into that underground storm system. Then, we've taken and identified the five-year capital program proposed, are either in purple, are the proposed ones, and the current blue ones are the ones that are funded within the current five-year CIP adopted by council. We've taken a look at updating the ballot language, keeping all the language the same, except for what we've added in red, and I will read the last little bit, it said, "said drainage utility charge not being subject to amendment more often than once every three years, except that any proposed increases shall not exceed the combined increases of the Consumer Price Index for the Houston-Galveston-Brazoria metropolitan area for the previous three-year period," added in. So, next steps moving forward is that we would ask the call for the election in January to have this item put on the ballot for voters to look at in May. If the proposed ballot measure is approved by voters, then our next steps would be the adoption of the ordinance, creating the district, I'm sorry, municipal utility, adoption of an ordinance to levy fees, and then staff to complete the development of our stormwater utility business plan and policy. If it is not approved, maintenance will continue as currently being conducted. Staff levels of current six remain the same, has remained the same, will continue to remain the same. System is still growing, and its level of service will be reduced just due to staff capacity and funding. Also, one thing is our maintenance of our system is tied to several of our permits, our MS4 permit that we've talked about previously, also our FEMA community rating system, both require annual reporting of activities that are done through our best management practices. Also, FEMA community rating system is tied to our insurance reduction benefits to our residents. The reduction is reportable activities will cause our ratings to be reduced, and the benefits to our residents are reduced as well. Those that are in the 100-year floodplain could potentially see a decrease in their percentage of discount. One item to talk about a little bit is our handling of tax-exempt properties. Texas local government code allows, but does not require a city to exempt some properties from the fees. Other government entities that, as we've been doing our research, includes county, municipality, school district, religious organizations, all developed property impact the drainage system, please realize that, all developed property. But 50% of the Texas cities that we've polled exempt ISDs, 36 exempt other governmental entities, and 23% exempt religious organizations. ISD state funding mechanisms would not be able to be adjusted to meet the municipal drainage fee, they have a fixed fee or fixed funding, and they're not able to adjust that to meet that fee. So, appears that's where some of the cities have exempted their ISDs for that reason. At this time, I'd like to turn it back over to council, City Manager Pearson is to turn it over to council back for any questions or comments.
Real quick, Clay, do you know if that, does that complete staff report?
Yes, sir. And just to recap, as Robert said, there was specific language that was suggested, we've drafted some of that for your consideration, and then, question of the, the school governmental entities, if you wanted to approach that now, that'd also be germane to the topic.
Okay, and the only question, and I'll turn it over to council real quick, because I know we had talked about CPI, and you mentioned Consumer Price Index, is that what we're going with, or did we want some kind of a construction price index? I wasn't, I'd heard both on the C, I heard both.
I apologize, Consumer Price Index is what is there.
In reference from Robert, that's something we use in some other contexts, and so, the idea is just be consistent, I mean, there's nothing perfect about it, but.
Let me add that to, Mr. Pearson, to add that, is that this is the same language that we use in our contracts, with our construction contracts, to utilize if there is an inflation. We also use that in our general service agreements, where if we have an inflation on parts and materials, if we renew their contract, they can go by the Consumer Price Index.
We tie it to CPI.
Yep, yes, sir.
With that, we'll turn it over to council for questions, comments, concerns. I know Member Perez reached first.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I know there may be a desire to relitigate the issue in total, but ultimately, we have it on the ballot, the citizens are going to be, have a chance to vote on it. I think what we've heard tonight is, at least reinforces my belief in the necessity of this, to be able to try and more aggressively go after these much-needed drainage projects. All of the ones that were listed, none of them include the one that was discussed tonight by, by the individuals who are saying, hey, there's one more project that we need to consider. I imagine if we went across the city, nearly everybody, particularly on the west side with open ditches, are probably going to have a similar concern. So, I think what's, what's at stake here for tonight is, you know, what do we want to modify the language to, so that it goes to the ballot, there's the controls that we discussed. I'm comfortable with the CPI index. I know Member Carbon had stated previously a desire to kind of limit how often we modify this fee, and put some controls on it so that it cannot be, for lack of a better term, bastardized for something that we don't intend it to be. And to reiterate again, as the, the council member who kind of originated this, my intent is to create a fee that's used for projects, not a creative fee that's used where we kind of move money around and reduce some pressure off of the general fund. I want all or most of this money to go to be able to dig ditches and to make improvements. The difficulty is, how much do we want other organizations, or all the organizations to participate? You know, I think there's a fairly easy argument for us to make, that we can exempt ISDs, since we're basically taking tax dollars, put into an entity to come back to another entity. I don't know that that wholly makes sense, though, you know, ISDs, the water falls on you equally to all other people, I think just because of that mechanism for ISDs. I think that's a fair exclusion. What I'd like to do is have staff give us an understanding of what the impact would be to the total revenue if we exempted ISDs. I think if we're going to exempt ISDs, because they're a taxpayer entity that expands to pretty much any government entity that collects its revenue primarily through tax, tax dollars, so any of the county buildings, any of the state buildings, we, I don't think we can tax the federal building, so I don't think that that's, that's relevant. But I think there's a, there's a logical conclusion there, drainage district as well. I think there's a logical expansion there. But my question to staff would be, my, well, I'll, before I ask the question, I'll say my general concern, I think the denser we make this ballot language, the more difficult it is to explain to the citizenry what we're trying to do. And if we add this other caveat, and this other caveat, this other caveat, the language gets befuddled, and nobody really knows what we're trying to accomplish. So, those who may support it, would vote for it, may not vote for it because they can't read through the language, or people who don't want to support it may vote for it because that they're not clearly understanding what the ballot's trying to say. So, if we were to exempt government entities, would that necessarily need to be in the ballot language, or could we adopt that through an ordinance and have kind of the same protection, that that could be a long-term solution?
Councilmember Perez, our recommendation in the write-up is that that would be adopted as part of the ordinance, so that does not need to be part of the ballot language.
Okay, so we, if we, if it's adopted as part of the ordinance, it could be modified by a change of the ordinance, so it would not be, need to go back to the voters. So, if we decided in the future, we want to, we've excluded in the original ordinance ISDs, but not necessarily the county, it gives us the flexibility to say, okay, we've met with the county. met with the county, we realize maybe we need to add that inclusion, but that gives us flexibility to kind of expand that as we need to, if there's a conversation from a future council that maybe religious organizations or other charitable organizations or something like that also should be the exclusion. By just do, by next, keeping that language out of the ballot, it gives us the flexibility to expand that as we need to, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so I, you know, I would, I am supportive of at least examining the impacts of excluding the tax-paying entities and seeing what that does to the overall general, the, the revenue fund. I think, you know, if it's just a reduction, it's a reduction, we keep the fee where it's at, rather than playing too much with the language or modify.
To clarify, tax-exempt. You said tax-paying entities.
I'm sorry, I just, tax-funded entities, I apologize. So I, I'd like to, I'd like to see what that impact is, give us an opportunity to see.
So we did some real rough calculations on the ISDs and ballpark those between, Alvin ISD between $75,000 and $100,000, and Pearland ISD between 225 and 300 annually. They're going to be the two largest governmental entities, the other ones are going to be fairly minor. So, you know, a total of somewhere around, around $400,000 on the income that we, or revenue that we saw on the pro forma.
So perhaps we could see what we would not, would need to modify the 179 to, to kind of make up that difference? And see if we, if we as a council want to say, we'll reduce, we'll take the burden off of the government or the tax-funded entities, and then just live with the lower value, or do we want to make up the difference and try and get to the value that was originally With the, could we go to the screen, we're talking of expenditures? So I, I do like maybe having a standard metric on there to where 80 or a, a large percentage of the fee has to go to projects, has to be allocated to projects. You know, I've kind of consistently said, I do not want salaries paid for this, paid with this, or anything else that can be, is generally already paid with the general fund, because I don't want to, I don't want to use this just as a way for us to reduce the general fund and then backfill it with something else that's not related to storm. I know that's not the intent of what's, I'm not suggesting there's anything duplicitous here, but I don't, this, I don't want this to be a tax, I don't want this to be a backdoor tax.
So to be clear, the pro forma, the revised pro forma, there is no current existing expenditures being moved over into the drainage utility. All the operating enhanced, those are for enhanced operations, things that we either are lacking today or foresee being required by our MS four permit in the future.
That I understand, particularly the stormwater quality, and maybe even some BNP's that we would have to implement on our end, or we'd have to facilitate as that's triggered in our next five-year renewal. The one that drives, gives me the most concern is the associate engineer. What would be the intent of that, of that expense?
So councilman Perez, taking a look at that, that associate engineer would be associated with the drainage, that would be your drainage, as you're talking projects here, but also for testing, stormwater permit requirements, you know, those items associated with drainage in here.
And just to reemphasize, so if we're doing 80% projects, somebody needs to manage that, even managing the contractors. So if we don't do that, that, we won't be able to keep up with the future permit requirements, and won't be able to manage these projects we say we want to do.
I'd say it, it still gives me a little bit of consternation, because I don't want that person to have served double duty. If we can have some protection eventually in this language, this person's job is solely to assist and facilitate this fund, so that there, we're not using this to fund, say, another engineer who's also doing plan review, who's also doing development review. Again, I don't expect that that's what the intent is. I know for certain, given my relationship with y'all, that that's not what your intent is, but to try and protect what my intent is, I'd like some language in there to make sure that we're just not, there's a very strict limit on non-project-related expenditures in this fund. Personally, I'll, I'll say I'm comfortable with the 80/20, but again, we would say that that's adoptable by, that, that, or that's going to be adopted by the ordinance. So there is an opportunity for a council in the future to modify that, but if, at least if it's in the ordinance, and maybe in, in the ordinance that requires a, a major, a supermajority or a, a complete, or the votes of every member of council before we modify that percentage, that way there's some, some firm protections in place. That way the fee does what we intended it to do. That's all I have, mayor.
Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and have, can we pull up the, the project list, one that had the yellows and greens, there you go. And then engineer Upton, I'm going to be a little expository with you, so we're just going to, I'm trying to put some data out there. So in the discussions earlier, you mentioned we currently don't even have enough dollars in the budget to maintain the system that we have today.
We're currently reactive. That means that when someone calls in, or we take a look from there, we will go out and evaluate, prioritize, and address at that time.
Let me ask it this way, is the budget robust enough to do what you would like it to do on drainage?
We've answered that no, we would like to have more.
Okay, and it's clearly not working for members of the community here, it's clearly broken. I'll say it, you don't have to say it. This project list isn't everything that we need it to be. There's literally a document that has $984 million in 2018, that's probably closer to 1.1 or 1.2 billion now, just because of cost creep, and now you've had this run-up in COVID pricing. That's what we need to do to start getting back on the right road. It's not 60 million, it's not 20 million, it's not 30 million, it's probably like a billion, and we're probably not getting even everything that we want. Engineer Upton, explain to me in, in the process, so water hits in a neighborhood, and at what point does it become the city's responsibility? Obviously, there's muds, there's other jurisdictions, I just want to illustrate the difference between BD4 and the city, and where does our responsibility start and stop, and where does theirs?
So we take it from a, we'll take it starting from a local level where water will drain onto or vertically drop onto someone's property. Once it is drained and comes out to roadside ditch, then it will be in the city's responsibility in the roadside ditch, or an enclosed pipe system such as in a subdivision. From there, it's collected, can flow either into a larger system that the city may operate and maintain, or then flow into a regional system that is operated and maintained by Brazoria Drainage District Number Four. And then Brazoria Drainage District Number Four then operates and maintains Cowards Creek or Hickory Slough, and then out to Clear Creek, where that's a shared responsibility between Harris County Flood Control and BD4.
So what happens is this is complex, and the water doesn't respect boundaries very easily, it doesn't really respect governmental entities, it honestly doesn't care, right?
Water just wants to find level. Water's going to flow downhill.
Right, okay. The, I, I struggled at the very beginning of this, when we had 10 people come and say what their problems were, and these were not events that were hurricane-level events. And I just, I struggle, because water really doesn't care about what color you are, what religion, who you pray to, your personal politics, it doesn't even care, you're white-collar, blue-collar, it just wants to get low, wants to get level, possibilities it may drown you. And the, the part that I struggle with is, there are people now in our city that are living with fear when it rains hard at night. They don't know if they're going to have their car flooded, they don't know if they're going to have their home flooded, they don't know if their dresser is literally going to be floating when they wake up in the morning after a hard rain. And I struggle with that, we just have to get better. We have been underfunding this item for a long time. I congratulate member Perez for working on this issue. This was a 3-5 issue in 2018, 2019, it is now a 5-2 issue. If member Little was here with the guardrails in place, I've heard we might be a 6-1 on this issue. This is an issue that we just have to take on as leaders, we have to evolve to meet the problem. Let me just illustrate what the problem is. Mr. Upton, what was the standard pre-Atlas 14 in a 24-hour rainfall event? What was that number, inches plus or minus?
Guys, are you talking three-hour event, five, 24-hour event, 100, 100-year, 24-hour events, 13.4 inches approximately?
13.4 inches. What is that today in the Atlas 14 realm?
Run in our area right here is about 17.6.
That's a big fancy word for your system, an 100-year event should handle 13-point-something inches, relatively straightforward. That system has now moved, that number has now moved to 17 inches. We have people struggling that aren't even at that standard, who live here, who have been paying taxes, and they, they cannot handle that. But that is a standard that we're, we're trying to hack at, we're just not there. For the folks who want to say, I don't want to spend any money, I understand that, I fundamentally do, but you got to pay the freight.
Councilman Camcar, I'd just like to correct something real quick, as you're talking about that. Our storm systems as designed by our engineering design criteria manual are three-year, three-year capacity events in our roadside ditches, and also in our enclosed pipe system, or five-year if it's a thoroughfare. And then looking at detention, detention is delta difference on the 100-year event for storage to be able to handle the discharge, okay?
Appreciate that clarification.
Please, I just wanted to correct that we're not trying to design for a 100-year event.
I got it, I got it. So, long story short, that's a lot of CYA to say, we're still not able to do what we need to do. Here's, here's the situation, the storms are not getting smaller, they're getting bigger. People should not go to bed with fear. This is going to cost money. The one thing that everybody in this room and everybody listening should have hope on, the engineers in this region know how to deal with this problem, but we have to hook up the resource machine to this. There is nothing for free, there's not going to be anything for free. I, I hate to tell you this, we should already not have this problem, but there are a lot of priorities in the system, this city, and everybody on the staff will tell you that general fund is super competitive. And what, what happens is, this is not a police car, this is not a fire engine, this isn't a police station, this isn't even a park. And so you know what, nobody goes and cuts the ribbon in front of a drainage culvert. You just don't, it doesn't happen. Guess what, when that storm starts getting over your house and it starts getting real dark, you're thinking about that drainage culvert, you're not thinking about the park, you're not thinking about the police station, not thinking about the fire station. Public safety and drainage are going to be the same thing for the next, till we're all dead, 50, 60, 80 years. Public safety and drainage are the same thing. And until we start taking drainage as seriously as we take public safety, we are going to be lagging behind. This young lady here, her eyes are surprised, they're big as can be, I, I am having a hard time, I will struggle sleeping with that, because I can only imagine what that's like, going to bed not knowing is your house going to be underwater. And I'm sorry I'm getting on my high horse here, mayor, I really am, but this is the issue, this is one of the issues I ran on to get elected, this is a very important issue, we have to start attacking this issue. Doing anything less than getting this on the ballot and getting approved is not tackling this issue. Period, point-blank end story. Now, I'm going to go to this project list, and I'm going to talk about my amendments, and I'm going to get off my horse. This item, I could for hours, but we got a lot of stuff to go through. This project list is fluid, this moves. This project list does not move until the money machine is hooked up to it. The staff is telling you is the money machine is not hooked up, we don't have enough money to maintain the system, let alone do more in the system. So when you're going to have a chance to vote in May of '22, do you want to do more or do you want to do less? We're going to go and add to this, we are trying to do small and medium-level projects, neighborhood-level projects. You come back and talk to us, and we're going to get this project on this list. You're going to, this is going to be an exercise in persistence. I apologize, but this is bureaucracy at its best, this is an exercise in persistence. I'm just being real dead forward honest with you. I'm pro-park, but I'm also pro-public safety, that's where we're going to be, and public safety is, is important.
It's important, you know, we can't, we can't dialogue with you.
Remember, Camcar, let, let's make sure we don't have.
Yeah, you got it, okay. So, yes, sir, I apologize.
We don't need to get in trouble legally.
Yeah, I'm, I'm getting ramped up here, you're getting me all lathered up. So I'm going to get to my four items. We need to have this item be tied to CIP, I would like to amend that, that CPI, CPI, apologize, Consumer Price Index, I'm happy with the CPI language as is. The second thing we need, we need to limit this to two to three times in a 10-year period. The concern that we have is year one, it's one number, year two, it's another number, we need to eliminate that concern. This is a conservative council that does conservative things, people need cost certainty, we also need planning certainty. I'm, I'm open to two or three, I am, I am agnostic on that. It can, it has to be stipulated, we cannot raise this number to match more than two times in a decade or three. Third item, will you please go to the pro forma, please? Member Perez advocated, and I echo it, this is small text, I apologize, an 80/20 split, so 80 is to capital projects, capital projects means big yellow machine does something, that's what we want, big yellow machine. We don't need more bureaucrats talking, we need big yellow machine moving dirt. Capital projects, capital equipment debt service, I'm going to move that that's 85/15. 85/15 is projects doing something, that's what I'm going to ask that this council amend the language to. And the last thing I'm going to ask is that any changes to the ordinance and the ballot have to go back to the voter to approve. They are going to change this on, on the 20th of May of 2022. I am open to a council changing in the background certain items, but the voters get to decide, do we want to change the percentage, do we want to move the adjustment period, do we want to move that? That's where I need to get to, it needs to go back to the voters if we need to, those are four items that I want. For the public entities and the business entities, I am open to more discussion, but that is probably post, not pre. We need to get this done, these people need this to get done. Those are my four items. Tying the CPI, limiting to no more than two or three times in a 10-year period, 85% to capital projects, and any change to the, the functional items in the ordinance that are being voted on, need to go back to the voters so that they can have oversight on this issue. That's my time.
Before we move on, I'd like, if, if we can, Mr. Coker, on what, what member Camcar just mentioned about the, in the ordinance itself, and then requiring it to go back to the voters and, and, and all of that, can, can you give some clarity? Because it's, it's my understanding, the way this language is being proposed, is the voters won't have a say on the ordinance itself.
Okay, this is going to take a while to explain.
But it, but it's important.
But we're, we're here.
This is an important issue for our public to understand. It's important for them to understand what you're voting on and what you're authorizing the council to do, and then what that means, not with this council, I'm not worried about this council. I'm worried about a council 10 years from now. Okay? That didn't take this to the voters, that did not face the voters and says, I don't care, I wasn't on the council then, I'm going to go do X. Okay? So I don't want to set off a train that somewhere out in the future could have a train wreck for everybody involved, and we're not living with a $5 fee, we're living with a $50 a month fee. Okay? I want to be careful with that as an unintended consequence of our actions. I want us to spell that out, and that's all I want, so I want our, our city attorney to kind of walk through that, so we understand that.
Okay, first of all, I, I'm just going to ask for your indulgence in everybody here this evening, as I sort of walk through this, because there, there were several questions from multiple council members today on this very issue, and I, I just want to make sure everybody understands. So if you don't mind, I'm going to take us back to 2019, it was August, we were actually having this same discussion back then. And we were trying to weigh the options on how's the best way to proceed. And just so everybody knows, the, the law that authorizes the ability to create a drainage utility, it actually, it, it's already authorized by state law. We have the ability, it can be done automatically right now. But at the time, the discussion was, let's not impose a drainage utility on the public without giving the public some input. And so then it shifted to what options does the city council have in that instance? Well, there's two ways it could actually be done. First of all, let me again explain, a drainage utility, if we were to just create one without going to the voters, it's a two-step process. One, you have to create the utility, and then secondly, you have to pass, that's by separate ordinance, and then you have to have another ordinance which approves the fee. Okay, so, and I likened it, I know this is maybe not something that will resonate with everybody here, but if you have a, a trust, you create a trust, that, that trust is only a shell until you have a funding mechanism, and you have to fund that trust, okay? It's sort of the same thing here, so we can create a utility, but the utility doesn't have funding until you fund it. So there are two separate ordinances that would ultimately have to be passed to do that. So fast forward to So fast forward to the council says, okay, well, we'd rather have the voters have the say on this. And so there were two ways that could be done. Okay, the first way is the council could go ahead and go through that very process I just described, adopt both ordinances. But put a contingency on it, say, we're approving these, but we're going to make it contingent on voter approval. So it would be sitting here sort of approved and then it would go to the voters and then the voters would have their say at the ballot box on whether or not that ordinance, the entire ordinance, it would already be prepared and approved. Would be, would be approved. Now, there's a catch to that. There is a provision in our charter. It says any ordinance that goes to the voters in that manner, the only way it can ever be changed or amended is every time you amend it, whether you're amending the fee or whether you're just amending, adding a section to it, the only way you can do that is to take it back to the voters every time and do an election. It's a unique provision in here. So, um, so that was one option. The other option was to do what's called the creation of a measure or a proposition is what you typically hear that referred to in in um, in Texas politics when you're voting on something, it's a proposition. And a proposition is you would not be voting on the ordinance. And that's really what we're talking about here this evening. We're talking about proposed ballot language, a proposed proposition. And how is that going to look on the ballot when it goes to the voters? Now, again, that's, I just want to make sure everybody understands. That provision that says, under the option two, I just mentioned where the the ordinance was approved, but then subject to voter approval and you couldn't amend it without voter approval? If you do it as a proposition, that exists, that exists uh, in a very limited form. In other words, ultimately, an ordinance can be changed further down the line. And so hence, I believe one of the things that was just raised by council member was, you know, could we put some limitations then on certain things would not be able to be changed without voter approval. And we can talk about that more in just a moment. So I just want everybody to understand. So we're, what we're talking about, it's it's in our charter, it's called a measure. And so when an item is presented to the voters as a measure, that provision that says you can't go, that you can't amend it without voter approval, that no longer applies because you're not voting on the ordinance itself. You're voting on the proposed measure. Hopefully, that provides a little bit of clarity on that issue. There is a something that I I want to just caution council is we we really agree not to put our thinking caps to figure out how to get there with this. And one of the reasons is uh, when you do a measure uh, under state law, it can only be presented as a single statement. And not to say you can't have semicolons and and add-ons to that statement, I just want to make sure everybody understands. It's a single statement that is presented to the voters. Are you for or are you against? And what the the concern I have is if we talk about this tonight and just be cognizant of it and be aware of it, is that if you if we start adding on and adding on, um, then you you can get into some voter confusion issues and we want to make sure that we're avoiding that. Because I I don't think anybody wants to deal with subsequent challenges because of voter confusion. So I just want to make sure that it's as concise as possible while trying to capture everything the council discusses here this evening. Was I too verbose?
No, that helped. And 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 the reason I I wanted to make sure that we had that on the table is I I think the bumpers that you're trying to put there are valid and are good bumpers, but under, we're voting on a measure. Excuse me, we're sending a measure to the voters. So going back to the voters and voting on any changes to the ordinance simply won't be the case. Had we decided to put a ordinance in front of the voters, then then yes, we we could do that. So um, and so I I want to make sure that as a council, we don't, you know, over promise what we can do or what say you will have in the future. I want to make sure that we're keenly aware of where and what this can be in the future. Okay? I think it can be a good measure to help with drainage needs. I also see the potential, and it's up to the voters to make sure that you elect good people that don't abuse this in the future. It's open for abuse. We just need to make sure that you have good people that would not abuse it in the future. Does that, does that make sense? So it's it, because it's a new fee. It's a new tax. It's new money coming in. This is not part of the budget. This is above and beyond your property tax. This isn't the same property tax bill that you pay uh, through your mortgage or, you know, annually through the through the uh.
It's a, Mary, it's a water bill item, right?
Right.
It's technically on your water bill.
It'll, it'll be attached to your water bill. And so even the CPI here, as I understand it, uh, Mr. Coker, that while we intend for it to not increase more than CPI for our area uh, for the previous three years, the ordinance itself would have to have that in it. And then secondly, any future council could amend that to be any increase it wants.
And to follow up on that, so just so everybody knows, so somebody could ask, well, what if this went to the voters and then no action was taken? It was approved by the voters, but then no action was taken. The the Texas Attorney General has ruled in Texas, you can't, it's municipalities like us, we cannot do non-binding reverend, referendums. And we actually have language in our charter that sort of reflects that. So, and what that means is non-binding, you can't basically just go take the temperature of the public and conduct elections to take the the temperature, see if they would go for it or not. And so, and there is a provision in our ordinance that says if um, uh, excuse me, in our charter, section six point one eight, if the qualified voters approve an ordinance, a resolution or a measure, that's what we're talking about here, then um, it shall become effective as law or a mandatory order to the city council. And so I just want to make sure everybody understands what that means is if it's approved, at a minimum, something's going to have to be uh, adopted by the city council because it becomes sort of an order to this council, sort of the public's telling you, go do this. And you have, and you approve that. Uh, and it's going to have to contain the items that you put into your ballot language. I I only brought up the caveat, but because of that, it, because it's a a measure and not an ordinance being presented to the voters, that's why you still want to be cognizant of the fact there could be subsequent changes to it without voter approval. And hence, uh, I guess council member Cam Car's comment.
So just really quickly, Darren, I apologize, Mayor. Sorry.
No, you're good.
We're talking about something that's complicated and it it takes time to pull it apart and move.
Well, it's important. It's important.
Absolutely. Um, so Darren, or uh, City Attorney Coker, so if we put in the language somewhere to hear that any changes to an ordinance needs to go back to the voters, would that close the door?
It, it would technically, because if the your mark, if the marching orders for the council is to adopt an ordinance that includes that, and then you adopt an ordinance that has that, uh, you would never be able to amend it without going to the voters and and do that. That that would be technically correct.
A greedy scum sucking lawyer wouldn't use language to figure out ways to do things, would they?
No comment.
Yeah. I'm just, I think that's kind of where I'm going. We're we're trying to give some peace of mind to the voters that this doesn't become a willy nilly monstrosity. And and I think we need to do that. I think we need to be responsible. I think, I think there's ways to mitigate some of this issue, so.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
Questions, comments?
So I'll try to stick with, um, I guess the language issue here. I'm totally fine with tying this to the CPI. I think that's, that's good. It gives us an indicator of what is potentially to come. I I I know the eighty five fifteen I think would also be good. I think this came before us previously and I didn't have the traction that it has now. And I'm glad to see that this is going to the to the voters. I'm fully in support of taking this move and um, and and taking these funds rather and applying them towards drainage projects. It's since I've been on council and since I was reelected, it was the most consistent thing that I've heard, drainage, drainage, drainage from people in the community. And so I I think this is, this is a a direct answer to the constituents that, you know, I um, converse with on a regular basis. I I think also adding language, I I want to be careful, yeah, not to let this get too large because I think it was a very clear thing. I I'd used an illustration whenever this kind of first came before us for the vote to go onto the ballot. Where I'd have conversations with individuals in the community where I'd say, how often do you get to say, you know, this five dollars of, you know, this five dollar fee or this five dollars of the tax that I'm paying is going specifically to this thing that is a priority to me. I think that providing that level of clarity as to where the money is going is just as important as providing clarity with the language that we're putting before the voters. I I think if I had to pick of all these CPIs already in there, I would definitely want to make sure that that we get the uh, language in there on restricting any changes, um, except for those that go uh, for an additional referendum for the voters. As far as the exemptions that were presented, uh, potential exemptions to this, if that's something that we can address after the fact, I I think it would give us a little bit more opportunity to look at what the ins and outs of those exemptions would include. But um, overall, I'm just really um, really happy to see if this is going to the voters, if they approve this. It's, I think, going to make a a big difference in our ability to, as our city engineer said, be proactive for a change, which is just so exciting to me. I mean, that's why I got um, on to council in the first place is to, you know, make sure that we stayed ahead of things for a change. A lot of cities are not in a situation where they can do that and thinking that we can make our city yet another opportunity to provide example to others, to stay proactive, serve their residents, make sure that they don't have that fear whenever they put their head on their pillow at night, I think is is really a very exciting um, thing for me. But um, I don't know if I provided enough direction there. So I'll just do a quick recap and then I'll pass it on to the line. Fine with tying a CPI. I think eighty five fifteen split is is fine with me as well. I do want to see the majority of this go towards capital projects. And then um, if there's some way that we can say that we would restrict this, any changes to a ballot measure in the fewest words possible, I would uh, be in favor of that as well. And with that, I yield there. Thank you.
Carbone?
All right, um, if we go back to slide eight real quick, um, to everybody that's here, um, from the Shady Crest area. There's a gentleman right in the middle in a gray shirt with, or a brown shirt with a gray mask, Paul S. Guy, most persistent guy here. Introduce yourself and uh, he will, uh, he he worked on on a drainage issue that was near and dear to his heart. Staff, we need to get it on, on the CIP. Whether we have this fee or not, and we we need to 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 get that project on the CIP and then and then find out how to fund it. From the beginning, I've been in in favor of a bond. But the first step is getting it on the capital improvement project, um, period. So, sorry, Paul. But um, that that's a number one and and I just might be a horrible cynic, but if I don't say now, I'm going to kick myself the rest of the week or year. There's a reason everybody's here for the drainage issue. And um, I think there's stuff going on behind the scenes and we're getting played. Because this topic's up here tonight. I think that there's a lot of good talking points. Yeah, there's a lot of fear. I mean, I I grew up, we didn't put carpet back down. We lived on concrete floors and we had beds and furniture on cinder blocks because they dry out real quick after the water recedes. So I mean, I get it. And we need to fix it. And and the other thing that was concerning, there was some mention earlier about maybe a five two or a six one vote. I don't recall discussing it in open meetings, so I guess I just want to remind us all that we need to have these discussions in open meetings. So that we can all be privy to the to the discussions. There's a, there's been a, what, a one point one to one point two billion dollars um, mentioned. Again, I think that's, that's excessive. Does that solve every drainage problem in the whole city? Yeah. Is it realistic that we would ever spend that much, even if we had a blank checkbook? No. Uh, but it makes, again, makes for a good headline. Alvin ISD wrote us a three page letter. Um, and whether we exempt them or not, they had some really good points that face a lot of businesses. I mean, they've, they've built to current standards. They've, they've spent how many hundreds of thousands of dollars in retention? Retention, detention, um, whether they're paying in through muds, turds, however you're getting paid, the the businesses that are building to the current standards aren't having, aren't having the issues. And so can we talk about, um, you know, Al exempting the school districts? Okay, but if, I don't know if it's, if it's, where are we going to stop? The the over sixty five exemptions, are we going to give over sixty five exemptions like we do on property tax, disabled vets? Are we going to go to nonprofits? I don't know. It's a slippery slope and um, I don't know, it's a more discussion to be had. But I I do agree that we don't need to 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 tax other taxing entities, but I I don't I don't agree with this fee or new tax or whatever you want to call it, if you can't tell. So, um, again, I I think, you know, laying out a bond right here on slide eight, you've got fifty eight million of projects. You know, should that be seventy five or a hundred million? Put it out to a bond referendum. Uh, taxpayers can vote it up or down. And there's a a limited life. What's going to happen and and not bashing staff, but staff's presenting more debt that we're going to issue once we have this new fee. So I mean, we're issuing debt one way or the other. We're getting around the the exemptions and and some of the safeguards that are already out there um, in terms of rollback rates and and what we can do on on tax rates and it it just seems disingenuous.
Member Carbone, just real quick, disingenuous is a really interesting buzzword, uh, and I I've got to take that seriously. This council at September.
We let you talk.
No, no, here, I just, I just want to clarify for the record. This council reduced the tax rate by one point eight pennies and more or less paid for fifty four of these sixty dollars. And so disingenuous is a really strong word. We are working on this issue and we are trying to find ways to offset this. This is not, it would be nice. This is something that has to happen. I would just really caution when we use words like disingenuous. I really, really struggle with that because I think everybody up here comes to the council with good faith and goodwill towards everybody else. I've seen a lot of disingenuous things, but I don't comment on them. So I just, when you use that word, it's just one of those things.
Okay, that, first off, we're not going to interrupt anyone further. The use of the word disingenuous has come from your mouth to a staff member in the middle of the budget debate. So be careful when you make that accusation. There's three fingers right back at you. So, Member Carbone, please complete, uh, continue.
Thank you, Mayor. As as public comment earlier, we need to listen to businesses. I I haven't heard of any business supportive of this. I mean, it's additional tax. Without the necessary safeguards, I would much, much rather see a bond. I mean, it it solves the issue in my opinion. I know we can debate that. But I I think that's where that's where this needs to end up. And I would ask, I mean, I I can count to to four or five. Apparently, as as some of us have already, I would ask if legal could give us a a heads up before, I guess, the full I guess, in January at some point, what we can and can't do as council members to support or oppose this. I mean, once it's, once it's placed on the ballot, I've already had people reach out saying who's, who's supporting, who's, who's against and how that they can get informed and be involved. So maybe if you can give us a heads up aft, maybe sometime after January, um, to to make sure that we don't cross any lines uh, up here.
Absolutely.
I think that's all I have right now, Mayor.
Member Orlando?
It's fun to uh, fun to go at the end of of all of that. So I I just have a couple of comments. I guess I I don't even, it it's some of these tangents that like know what we're talking about and I I do want to circle back at the end towards um, what guidance staff needs from the council. But I I guess a few things. This isn't a vote about this, the city council could, if it wanted to, put this fee in place without sending it to the voters. So this is not what we're talking about doing. We're not talking about what is the nature of the fee that we're going to put in place. We're talking about what is the nature of the fee that we're going to send to voters and let them consider their unique circumstances, their finances, their community's finances, their their thoughts on on what we should do. Because there is everyone is going to pay here. We're we're going to pay somehow for the fact that we're having these storms of increasing frequency and severity. You're going to pay. You're going to pay either a a bond referendum or you're going to pay this drainage fee or we we don't do anything and some number of people are going to pay when the water. comes into their homes. So there, there's no avoiding the fact that people are going to pay. Some people are going to pay something. That, that, that's going to happen. So I, I think this has been a very thoughtful way of bringing this forward because, again, what we're talking about here and all of this discussion and are, are businesses going to have to pay this? What we're actually talking about, when we're talking about everything we're talking up here tonight, is the measure that voters get to decide. And I think that it's, it's not a great, none of these options are great. We're, we're in this environment where inflation is very high. A lot of people are struggling. The, the economy has been weird for a long time. And, and I'm, I'm very sensitive to that. And I'm, I'm sensitive to people making decisions that they think is best for our community. And so I, I think it's fair to say, we are going to let voters decide, do you want to do this or not? And if voters say not, the follow-up thing, I guess we could do a, a, a bond proposal, or it would be an acceptable thing for folks to say, yeah, we're just going to take this increased risk of flooding. I don't think some of y'all would be saying that, but, but that is something that people could say. But I, I just think this, this idea that, like, we're going to impose this, I, I think this was put forward in a, a really thoughtful way with a lot of guardrails. And, and I think those guardrails are sensible. I, I kind of wanted to get back to that at some point of, because Aaron Zanslayer, while thoughtful, kind of left me saying, okay, so what, what is the best option here? I, I think it ultimately is, we can put even further restrictions, we just have to be really smart about keeping it concise. So, th- this is, this is, again, this is about sending it to voters and letting people decide. I completely agree. I, I completely agree with what many members have expressed up here, which is, let's, let's keep it clear. Let's make sure people know what they're voting on. I, I think that's essential. And, and whatever people decide, I'm happy to abide by that outcome. I, I just, I don't, I, I guess I'm a little confused and maybe I, I don't know everything, but I'm, I'm a little confused about the animosity of letting people choose between not great options. I, I, I think, you know, that there are these, nothing is great. It's not great for people's houses to flood, it's not great for them to have an extra fee. So we're saying, we're going to let people decide which of those pills they want to take. And I, I'm just not, I, I'm not offended by that idea. On the idea of a bond, I, I think that's fine. We could do a bond. I guess I would just ask, like, why haven't we done that yet? It hasn't been proposed, I think. So, like, finally, we're proposing this funding mechanism to do something. I think that would be one way. One other thing I think I would say there, though, is, I, I think it was expressed by Mr. Upton, that we don't currently have the resources even to maintain our current drainage infrastructure. Is that correct, Mr. Upton? Except reactively?
Councilman Orlando, that is correct.
So, we're going to do a bond. We, we can't pay to maintain the stuff we have now. We're going to do a bond, build a bunch of new stuff. We can't even pay to maintain the stuff we have now. So we're not going to be able to maintain that, nor will we be able to pay for any of the stuff that we built with that bond. So the fee structure is a realistic assessment of the situation that says, it's not a one-time thing. The storms aren't getting any less bad. The floodwaters aren't rising any let, any less. This is going to be a problem that continues, and we have to have the resources to do it. How we get those resources or, or whether we get those resources is up to the voters, and, and I'm fine with that. And I, so anyway, I, I guess I'll just, I'll close out by saying a couple of things. One, I, I think that the, the proposals for limiting this are, are great. Let's, let's workshop through how we can do that in a way that keeps this manageable for folks to understand. And just to, to member Carbone's comment, I guess, I'll, I'll just say one thing that maybe I would kick myself if I didn't say it. What this proposal is talking about, everything we're talking about up here is from the, the folks that initiated this proposal to, to put restraints on it, to handcuff it. Like, like, that's being proactively brought forward. And, and we're all saying, like, oh, yeah, we, we need to put some guardrails so that future councils don't make really bad decisions. That's what Member Campcar and I proposed earlier about defunding the police. And it was said, oh, well, nobody here even wants to do that, so why should we handcuff these future councils? Because future councils might make bad decisions. And I, I, I agree that that is the case here. And, and that's why I'm in favor of putting on these, these handcuffs and restrictions. But I, I just, I, I think fundamentally, we all listen to these stories of these folks and, and feel for them. And I, at this point, I think we've all experienced if not flooding in our own homes or, or on our own streets, somebody we know very closely and intimately. I mean, this is a very real thing for people, and we all want to make, make that better. And so we, we have different ways of going about it, but I, I just, I, I guess I just want to come at it from that perspective of, hey, we're faced with choices that are not ideal. Let's work through them together with the thought that we all want to get somewhere around the same place. We have different ideas about the best funding mechanism to get there, but we want to try to, to help folks like this stay dry. And so we can talk through the specifics, but I, I think it's good to circle back to, we're all on the same team to do that. So, appreciate the opportunity to, to wrap up.
Good comment. So, Member Owens, Member Perez started off, so Member Owens.
This happens when you're number seven on the list, right?
You could have gone first.
No, I couldn't. No, I couldn't. You, you grabbed your microphone real quick. Now, you know, in, in the beginning on this, the, the thing that I had a big concern about, this council is not a council that should increase a tax or, or tax or a fee. You know, that's not where, what we're up here to do. So what I asked for, and ultimately, we all decided to do that, is make sure that we take it back to the people to vote on this, of being able to do that. And so that's out there. The next thing is, let's make it transparent. You know, you said up here, like, we have been tonight and everybody talking, you know, it's got to be very transparent when you put it out to the people to, to know what they're looking at and, and where it's at. The other thing I'd say too, you know, we, Campcar and I and Trent Efferson met with the DD4. And we're going to be meeting with them again and seeing how we can combine things to work together too. The other thing, looking at some of the cost that's in here, and, you know, and the city is trying to catch up what they can do, when they can do it. Is there anything for some of the equipment stood about it? Can we use some of the public works equipment that we already have, that y'all been using there? And then I think additionally is adding, what, another six people or so in there? I don't want to get tied up in a situation where we're spending, you know, a million dollars on, on equipment when we've got other equipment sitting over there that we could use, uh, over there during some of this till we get started. And a lot of the work would be going out with, you know, engineering firms to do the design on what needed to be done and then put it out for construction. But I'm saying, you know, be as much as we can to take a look and see how we can, and change this and not spend some money. If we've got equipment here, let's use our own equipment for the time being till we get started and kicked off. I don't think it, ultimately, the five dollars is going to do a heck, heck of a lot. Oh, the word almost slipped out. A heck of a lot to do it because there's a lot of work that really needs to be done. And there is some concern that I see in some of the areas. You take the school district in Alvin. They can't vote for this thing, but they're going to take a brunt of it, you know, as it said it right there. You know, Memorial Harmon said that their taxes go up eight thousand dollars, and they're going to have to recover that money somewhere. You know, HEB says something like theirs goes up twelve thousand dollars a year, and they need to recover that money out of that. And so that comes up with raising your prices on your food quantity. So it, it affects everybody in so many different ways that you do it. But I think, you know, to come in and, and do something like this to where people don't get to vote on it, that say, like in Alvin, they don't get to vote on it, they're going to be hit for a hundred thousand dollars a year. So that's something we need to look at. And, you know, you can tell by the discussions going up here now, we don't know exactly where this is and, and where it's at, you know. But, but I think, you know, everybody wants to make it very transparent, apparent for everybody that's going to be voting on this, as the way it is. And, and Campcar, he has put a lot of time and effort into this to come up with the information on it. And so, you know, I hope we're able to really look at it, but put it out there so everybody understands it.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend this language.
To what?
The motion I'd like to amend is, Darren, you have to help me. Any change to the enabling ordinance needs to go back to the voters.
Just to clarify before we get into the second, so the, the enabling ordinance will of course be ultimately what is adopted, right? I mean, if approved, then we go the, this, this is not an enabling ordinance, the ballot language. So I just-
I'm using enabling as a term of art that I'm open to changing. I just don't know.
Okay. All right. So if you, if you don't mind me sort of walk, talking through it, if you don't mind. So if, if you think about it right now, there, there's some built-in limitations right now, which I think if the council wanted to enhance that, you could, without handcuffing yourself on other minor changes that you may want to make to the ordinance and not have to go to the voters for approval. And if you think about it, anytime that there is a drainage fee ordinance out there, it, generally, when they're amended, they're, more often than not, they're being amended to increase the fee. That's, that's generally where the amendments are. So the, what I would suggest, I mean, right now, you already have a limitation, except that proposed increase shall not exceed combined increases of the consumer price index for the Houston-Galveston-Brazoria Metropolitan Area for the previous three-year, three-year period. And then you, you could add on to the end of that, except that if, if it did, essentially, it would require voter approval. That basically says, here's the limitation, here's the cap, because that's generally where your changes are going to be. For instance, if you want to make a, when subsequently down the line, if the council wants to make a, a proposed change to, whether it be exemption-related or some other, because generally speaking, the, the ordinance and what you do is, is pretty much defined by statute. So there generally aren't a lot of changes to the ordinance per se. So, I mean, you can build in some, just depends what council wants to build into that ordinance, and you'll have that opportunity then. But I, I would, I would indicate if, if the intent for council is to have that flexibility, that you not have, that it, that it not be broad. If you make it too broad, then you, you clearly wouldn't be able to go back and make those changes.
Okay. How about this? Any changes that reduce the efforts to prevent or fight flooding have to go back to the voters for approval.
Could you state that again?
Any changes that reduce the capability, like flooding with these funds, have to go back to the voters.
That's a, that's a subjective, and that's so up into interpretation. I don't know that that would be-
I know, I guess I'm trying to, I'm trying to lock the door here.
I know, I, I understand what you're trying to do, but I just don't know that that could be clearly defined and, and subject to interpretation.
Yeah. Let me just, as the, as the resident optimist, as much as I'd love to debate, Member Carbone, I think we'll have time over the next three months to go point for point on that. And what we're really trying to do is abound this language in a way that we're comfortable. But we're all elected to represent the people. Whoever follows us is going to be elected to represent the people. I, I don't, I don't feel comfortable, and only we should feel comfortable being the nannies of those who follow us, because there may be a necessity or modify, to modify this more on the fly. There may be some, some other issues that may come up that we can't predict. I'm, I'm a little concerned about the unintended outcomes if we lock ourselves too much in, particularly as we expand, expand this language to be so onerous that none of us will be able to explain it or read it. Though, I think in ordinance, when we get to the point where we're debating the ordinance, I think the ordinance is enough. We can put some protections in there that it requires a super, super majority or a, I'd say just maybe a simple, super majority of the council to make modifications like that. And I think that gets us where we want to go. I, I, I feel confident that in six years, when this entire council has reached its generation, there'll be one of us that may still be on. There are also all of us that will still be involved. So, you know, I just, I don't, I think everybody has the right intent, but I think what's going to, the consequence of it is, is that we're just going to lock ourselves a little too tight, and with any structure that is too rigid, it fails. So I think the one thing that I would like to see if we have an option to modify in the future is if we do exempt the tax, the tax-funded entities, what the value of the 179 would have to modify to in order to make up that difference, because that is definitively has to be in the language. And I'd like us to make sure that we, if we hold it to the 179, we're comfortable saying we're reducing the value or we're making up the value to what we had originally projected so we can do everything we wanted to do. Practically, that's the, we have to make that change in this language.
Okay. Mayor, I'm going to go ahead and rescind that. A motion to amend. I'd like to now make another motion to amend language. Third line from the bottom, I guess technically, fourth line from the bottom, not being subject to amendment more often than, instead of once, twice, every ten years. So instead of once, twice, and then instead of every three, every ten years. That gives some certainty to the general public as well as to the staff. The guardrail is there that we can't up this every year, or we can't, we can't subvert it in a way that becomes onerous.
Do we do it by just modifying every three years to every five years? Mathematically, that's every ten years, you can't modify it every-
I'm an Aggie, I don't know.
Well, twice every ten years could say, we could do it back-to-back, you know?
Yeah.
Twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three, and then we have to wait, you know? But, once every five years is clearer to me that it would be a five-year stretch each time.
I mean, mathematically, you'd say it's limited to once every three years, you can't change it more than three times a decade. If we want to limit it to, no, not reviewing it, not changing it twice a decade, which I'm, I'm fine with, I'm comfortable with that, if we need to modify it. But then we just say, just keep the language simple, it, the amendments more often than once every three years. And then obviously, the, the trailing statement also be changed to, to, or I'm sorry, it's three years, five years, and also the, the CPI index extend to five years so that can, that can be mathematically tied to the ordinance.
Darren, does that achieve what we want, just going no more, more often than once every five? Does that fundamentally achieve what we're trying to do here, which is space this out?
At least based on the discussion, what I'm hearing right now. I haven't heard from everybody, obviously, but I just want to make sure. So what, what you stated was, that would be no more amendment, let me see, subject to amendment more often than once every five years? Is that what you indicated?
Yeah. Respectfully, Member Campcar, I'm trying to accomplish what you're requesting-
No, no, I agree.
And keep the, keep the language as simple as possible.
And then would that also, I'm sorry, would that also change the, the CPI for the previous five years?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. I'm, I just want to make sure I'm not a great, I'm not a mathematician. I just want to make sure that I'm getting the language that does what we want it to do.
What do you think, Tony?
I've heard a motion to amend. I haven't heard a second. There we go. A motion and a second on that. Any other questions or comments on a, an amending motion? All right. Madam Secretary, we're going to vote on the amended, excuse me, the motion to amend.
Do you mind if I just state for the record what's, to clarify? I'm just want to make sure that the last paragraph of the proposed ballot language that's recommended by staff currently on the screen in red should be changed to, to read, "Except that any proposed increase shall not exceed the combined increases of the consumer price index." I'm sorry, I need to back up more than that, I'm sorry. Not being, drainage utility charge not being subject to amendment more often than once every five years, "Except that any proposed increase shall not exceed the combined increases of the consumer price index for the Houston-Galveston-Brazoria Metropolitan Area for the previous five-year period."
Is that correct?
As I understand.
Okay. That's correct. So Madam Secretary, we will call for the vote on that motion to amend.
Member Campcar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
The motion carries six to zero.
Okay. So now we're back to a, an amended motion.
Here, I'd like to make a-
I'd, I'd actually like to make a couple of comments to the public-
Sure.
Since I haven't had an opportunity to tonight. And I've waited to the end because I've been chastised for framing debates. So what, and, and for those in, in the public that are here tonight, I hope what you're seeing and hearing is, we are taking drainage seriously. We're trying to figure out how to pay for drainage. There are two schools of thought. We can create an entire utility, a drainage fee, a drainage tax, whatever you want to call it, and there's month, you know, monthly money coming in through your water bill. That's what's being proposed.
Mayor, I'm sorry, there's a sidebar conversation. Mayor, I'm sorry, there's a sidebar conversation.
Hey, guys? Can we know what that was about? It's sidebar conversations that are going on at the DISS, it's, it's not appropriate. And, and at the end of the day, we're trying to figure out how to pay for it. Two schools of thought. What we're proposing here, brand new drainage fee, you, you pay for it monthly, businesses pay for it monthly, everybody pays for it monthly through their water bill. Okay? And that's what the pro forma, and that's what all of this has been put up to address. The other way that Member Cam, excuse me, Member Carbone mentioned, see, I did that for both of you, that way I'm equal, for tonight, is the traditional bonding way of doing projects. We, we have spent a tremendous amount of dollars in bonds on drainage projects. We've done it to increase our, our regional detention, to take and relieve various creeks and tributaries that, that have historically flooded to reduce those, those streams. We just approved a subdivision redoing the drainage within that subdivision about, I don't know, a month, about a month ago, I guess it was. Wesley, very similar to the subdivision that you guys live in, large lot, open ditch, built probably 50 years ago, doesn't have all the drainage, doesn't have all the detention, doesn't have all of the things that the, the newer subdivisions have in them. That was put to the voters. That was a bond program from 2019. It's already out there and, and is going under construction. So there's two ways to do this. We've got another subdivision that's in bidding right now to redo the drainage. It's a curb and gutter subdivision, again, built close to 50 years ago, Willacrust, and we will be approving that one probably in January. That was a bond program. So we are doing bonding on various projects. The latest one was in 2019. So to answer a question, when was the last time we did a bond or when were we putting one together? We, we put one together and voted on in 2019. So that's what we're struggling with. There's philosophical differences between council members, and that's okay. That's what this is all about, that's what this desk is about. And I think, but all of us agree, we need to reduce flooding in homes within our community. It's just, how do you do it? I want to make sure that, that we keep it about that, okay? I've got a, I've got a son that had three and a half feet of water in his house, Harvey. I know, I know, I, personally, I wasn't there, but I know the effects of it because it affected my family. I also want to make sure that, that what we are doing here, even sending it to the voters, I was all in favor of sending it, if you're gonna do this, probably wouldn't be politically wise to just do it. Again, by law, can council just approve it? They can, politically speaking, probably wouldn't be wise to do that. Let's send it to the voters. Let's educate the voters. We have a very educated public, and they can get it, they can figure it out, and I trust what the voters are gonna have to say on this. Okay? At the same time, I want to make sure that what we're setting up, that we don't have unintended consequences, five years, 10 years, let alone 20 years from now, because this is a utility, doesn't have an end in it, doesn't stop, it stays forever. Okay? Death and taxes, two things that are gonna happen regardless, okay? So I want to make sure that what we're doing here, what we're putting in front of the voters, is the best option. It is an option, as Member Orlando talked about, we're talking about options on how we do this, and neither one of them are fun, because it means writing a check. At the end of the day, it means writing a check to fix some of these longstanding drainage problems. Specifically, in the Shady Crest area right behind us over here, the, in, in the Creekside Estates, I believe, is where your subdivision is. You know, we need to figure out exactly what's happened here. As mentioned by several of the residents, something has changed more recently than, you know, just the last few years. Harvey, as an exception, there's a, there's a problem, there's something's changed. I remember the, the rainfall almost a year ago on New Year's, New Year's Eve, okay? And, and it was, it was a, it came hard and fast and the water just wasn't normal, okay? We gotta figure that out. As you see in, I think it's slide eight, that there's no project to address that. We have to figure out what project to do, not just go out and do, but we gotta figure out what's the right thing to do. So, which is why I asked staff, let's take a, let's take a, number one, a quick look, let's figure out what's going on, but then let's come back and develop what needs to happen. As Member Carbone mentioned, we've got to put that into the CIP, the Capital Improvements Program, so we can figure out what it is to do and actually fix the problem, not make it worse. So what you're seeing in, in the discussion tonight, and it's been a robust discussion, it's been a good discussion, it's been a thoughtful discussion, there's just a difference of opinion on how to fund this. One way or the other, we have to fund it, okay? It would be interesting for me to know, if you pull up the 58 or 60 million dollars that's listed in the, in the pro forma, if you actually went to the voters with that 55 or, excuse me, 58 or 60 million dollars, what would that mean on your tax rate versus the $5 a month or versus the buck 79 per hundred, excuse me, per thousand on your impervious cover? It'd be interesting to know what those two are. We did have robust discussions about lowering the tax rate for this budget, 1.8 cents. We're proud of that. Had we kept the tax rate the same, we probably could have funded, if you go back to the pro forma, we could have funded all of that ongoing maintenance. But there wasn't a discussion about keeping the tax rate the same and putting those monies into Public Works and funding that ongoing maintenance obligation. None of that discussion was had. It's all out there on YouTube, you can go look at every single meeting, it was never discussed. Let's just lower the tax rate, because we're in inflationary times and we need to give relief to people. Turn around and now put a tax in front of them next May. Those are your options. You can either say yes to the new, a, a new way of paying this, or you can say no, and we have to go back to the drawing board and figure out a bond, traditional way of doing it. So I want to make sure that people really get a good understanding of, that's the two options we have. There's really no other really option, other, well, there is, and it's really no option, and that is doing nothing. That's always on the table, right? But that's not an option. We have to continue to fight these efforts to do good and create and, and do better with our drainage and fix longstanding problems along the way. So with that, I wanted to make sure that I got that on the table, so people understand where we are. There's gonna be a lot of education around this. We're gonna vote on ballot language tonight, we're gonna vote on calling an election in January. So more discussion to come between now and then, and then there's gonna be a lot of discussion around whatever that ballot language finally is, you know, between January and, and May. So I, I want to put that on the table. I know you want to make another amending motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend to add 85% of proceeds derived from this will go to capital projects.
Can I ask a clarifying question real quickly before we do that? I, I'm particularly interested to know, I guess, Robert, you talked about the maintenance portion of this. Would there be, if we did an 85-15 split where we said 85% goes to capital projects, that would not, would that include some of the maintenance projects that would go in there as well? Or would that just be new, new construction?
Councilman Hernandez, what I put back up there is the pro forma that was presented to you. As you can tell, year by year, it fluctuates anywhere from about 19%, 20% being the most to 13% being the least on the operating side. Those are all items to enhance, and we just see as you function through is that some of them are adding additional funds for a buyout program that we could then do in-house, should we have opportunities to purchase property from those homeowners or be able to help fund. But if you take a look, those are all items that are enhanced, items that we are not doing today, or, or of little funding, we'll talk about on the ditch cleaning contract, roadside ditch maintenance. We are having some of that, but it's at a funding level of about $110,000 a year. This would be able to, and continue to enhance and be able to get to those roadside ditches more frequently. Street sweeping, those are part of our BMPs, Best Management Practices, associated with our community ready system, and also our MS4, being able to enhance those from just doing the thoroughfares, major thoroughfares, three times a year to maybe being able to more frequently, and also maybe be able to hit some of the collector roads as well. So I'm just kind of analyzing, going through those, but these are, these are enhanced maintenance activities.
Roughly 20%.
About 20% is where we are.
Okay. I think kind of a reevaluation of this, I know I said it'd been 85-15 earlier, I'd like to maybe leave it where it is for now so we can place more of an emphasis on the maintenance aspect, but I just wanted to get that clarified before I went one direction or the other, but I do think it's important that we have a specificity in the percentages. I think 80% going towards capital projects is significant, and I think that was the intention there, at least to what Member Perez said that, or at least what I understood that he said his intention was. So, I don't know if you want.
There's no, and there's no language in this that says what this percentage goes to. And if we're talking about being responsible stewards, these people here want to know we're gonna do projects and we're not gonna fund more bureaucracy. We really need to put something in the language that the voters can see to know that something is going towards this. I'm gonna reiterate this one more time. I would like to propose amendment that we stipulate 85% of proceeds derived from this go towards capital projects, as currently presented in this, this slide here.
Second. All right, we have a motion, a second to, as a amending, excuse me, a motion to amend, always have to get that right. Motion to amend. Any other questions on the, on the motion?
I would just, I would just note, I'm, I'm comfortable with that language. I, I want the language to be in there, I'm comfortable with the language being in the ordinance, not tying it into the referendum. So all, that's why I'll vote no for it, but I think we need the protection. I, I like putting the, the limitation on there. It is interesting, after your comments, Mayor, that, that operating is about what, what the tax rate cut, so we're getting to the same point.
Correct.
As if we were issuing a bond. So again, that's still my preference, but I appreciate the, the bumpers.
You have other questions, comments?
I think my question is, and, and I, your comments were very well received by me. I, I guess my question is just on this, this point of there's two different schools of thought. It, it seems to be, as I said in my thing, I think both of those schools of thought are completely legitimate and you, you can believe those. At what point do we say that, we're gonna continue to tweak this over the next couple of months and make sure we get it exactly right, but at what point do we say, okay, we, we're, we're going with one of the schools of thought, which is to say, we're going with the fee, we've, we've talked about it multiple times, we voted on it, there was something about like a 5-2 or 6-1, like it was a secret thing, but we had a vote and it was 5-2, and then one of the members later on expressed, I might be coming around to supporting it. So I guess I'm saying, we seem to kind of, instead of going into the details, we're also spending time going back to like the initial approach, and I guess I just want to know at what point are we kind of locked in that, okay, we, we have a clear durable majority that says, you know, and some of us didn't like that, I've certainly been on the losing end of stuff and didn't like it, but at what point do we say, we're doing stormwater utility fee, and now we're talking about, we're doing a vote of the stormwater utility fee?
Well, I.
And how do we play with that around the edges?
I'm sorry. Yeah, apologies. Yeah, I, I think, well, number one, I think this council clearly voted five to two to send it to the voters.
For sure.
Okay. So that, that's already happened. And come January, right, I think it's the second meeting in January, am I correct, Mr. Coker?
Excuse me, I was just visiting with the city secretary on that, and while I think the original intent was to possibly do so with the second meeting in January, she did indicate that it could actually go into February to the first meet, I believe, first meeting in February.
So first meeting in February, we, you know, just like every, every year, we have to call for the May elections.
Right.
When we call for that election, we will be calling for this election as well as three, three member spots, three positions that will be on the ballot as well. So it, to answer your question.
That's when we're locked in.
That, that is a definitive time, and as far as language is concerned, I think we'll, we'll set the language for sure that night. We may still have a wiggle room of a, of a week or so if we needed to change and tweak some language, but bottom line is, come February, this will be locked in and it'll be moving forward. If the council decides to say, no, we're not gonna do it, sure, then you don't have to call for the election. But if the council's gonna move forward and call for the election, it's locked in.
Sure. I guess, I guess that's what I'm saying, it seems like we've, we've given that direction, so I guess I'm just.
Right.
And so I think we're now into the more pertinent discussion, which has been good and robust of like, yeah, how are we gonna rein this in?
Yeah. Yeah. And, and at that point, it is, is when, you know, and, and staff has operated purely off of good direction, and I think it's been very good direction from the council on what to put back in front of us. So they've been doing exactly what this council has, has asked to do, and whether a member or two or three or four or whatever disagrees with some of the direction, that's fine, that's everybody's prerogative, you know, in, in, in being up here. So again, I think it's been respectful, I think it's been robust, and we bet the dead horse to death. So I know, but we have a.
Mayor, to answer your question real quick, the, the deadline for the election calendar to call the election is February the 18th, the sec, or excuse me, the first council meeting in February is February the 14th. So that would represent the night that we would actually call the election.
Right. So we had a motion on the 80-20, correct?
Eighty-five fifteen.
I thought you amended it. Eighty-five fifteen, do we have a second on the eighty-five fifteen? We have a second on the eighty-five fifteen. We had a couple of questions.
No, I'm.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on an, a motion to amend? And Mr. Coker, do you want to restate the motion to amend, just to make sure that we've got it?
Please do. Okay. Yes. And just to clarify, we are now amending the proposed ballot, the ballot language that has now been amended to reflect the five year language that we just did, now we will be amending that language as, as presented here just a few moments ago. So the, the proposed language here would be to, excuse me, I'm, and I, I don't know where we're gonna put it at yet, I will put it into this, but I, but essentially what it would be to do is that any, that 85% of the proceeds generated by the drainage fee would be designated for capital projects.
Is that, that clear? Okay. Good deal. All right. So with that, Madam Secretary, we're gonna call for the vote on the motion to amend.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Yes, fine, aye.
I'm sorry.
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
The motion passes five to one.
Okay. So we have an amended motion, actually two amended, two amendments to the original motion. So any other questions, comments? Member Carbone?
I guess to circle back, this is still a measure that's going on the ballot, and so all this can be changed at council's whim in the future. We, we haven't done anything to this language to, to change any of that.
That, as far as, two years from now, if the council wants to go in and amend the ordinance, the council would have the ability to do that.
Yeah. So I don't know that that, that hadn't addressed it from, from my standpoint. So we, we put all these safeguards in there, but we could, it could be amended 12 months later, saying that we can change, we can increase the fee once every six months, right? I think that was often, I think that we cannot be disingenuous with what the voters voted upon, correct, without their.
No, and that's what I was trying to explain earlier, because this is a measure and not being presented as the, as the. No, and that's what I was trying to explain earlier, because this is a measure and not being presented as the, as the ordinance. The council does still have the, the ability to make those changes. If, if the concern.
Might not be politically smart.
Yeah, there's, there's the legal aspect of it and what your authority is. And then of course, there's the, the legal, I mean, the political ramifications for those decisions. But that being said, it sounds like, and, and I may be wrong, and so I'm just making some assumptions here. But it sounds like the, the concern would be clearly, I think you probably wouldn't want to change the eighty-five percent rule. Without, it sounds like that's something you would not want changed without voter approval. And then, and then also the, how often it can be amended.
Member Carbone, do you want to try to close the door? I'm open to try and close the door with some language that is more tight. I, I have a similar concern to you do to remember Perez's point. I do trust the people here because people have to vote for them. But this is super esoteric, you know, but you're not keeping an eye on it. These folks cared enough that they showed up, you know, probably unsolicited, came over here and told us their thing. You know, I, I don't want to go change it later on or two years or when we've rolled off. I'm, I'm happy to go knock this out for another thirty minutes and try to close the door if you want to.
I think Darren, do you have some proposed language to, I guess, tighten up the once every five years and that eighty-five, eighty-five percent?
It may have to be wordsmithed a little more, you know, wordsmithed a little bit later. But if I, if I think I believe, if I can restate and then get council concurrence, then that can be made part of the motion. And then we can move forward and then get draft language out to council, which can ultimately make sure it's consistent with tonight's discussions. So it's my understanding that what council would want, and, and just clarify for me, is that the, any changes to the to make sure it's the, the one part about every five years that you can't change it more often than every five years? That could not be changed? And the eighty-five percent designation of proceeds for capital projects could not be changed without voter approval?
Preferably probably the CPI.
And the CPI, okay.
So moved.
Second.
So we have another motion to amend, as stated. No, we did. We did. We have a, a motion to amend on the table as presented by the city attorney. Any other questions or comments on that?
No.
All right. So, Madam Secretary, do you have clarification on what that motion to amend is?
Please do.
Re-stated, so, all right. Just to clarify, this proposed motion would impose, would include language in the ballot. It would require any proposed amendments to the eighty-five percent capital improvement designation, CPI index designation, and the number, not amending more, any more often than once every five years. Those three items could not be changed without going to the voters for approval.
Yes, sir.
That's clear, okay. So Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote on the motion to amend.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Oh.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
The motion carries six to zero.
All right, we now have a, a three amended, 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 amended motion on the table. Good work, folks. I, actually I do, this is, this is heavy lifting and it's heavy work, but I think it's important work. So with that, any other questions, comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we're calling for the vote on the amended motion with the three amendments.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
The motion carries six to zero.
All right. I'm going to take a five-minute recess so we can all breathe for just a minute, five minutes.
We're going to call this meeting back into order. We're on, good deal. Moving to new business item number eight, where did I leave off with Tony, I think? All right, business item number eight.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action resolution R 2021-252, so move.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If we could pull up the agenda item and start with page seven of 168. So just to lay some groundwork, at the top here, we talk about the need for this software, which we use to manage the capital improvement program. That is a significant, obvious investment under our stewardship, just under $500 million over the five years. But I wanted to point out the scope of the contract. That's what is involved with this. And you can see the elements of what's involved with this software, all the technicalities of how it integrates with other pieces, training, testing and deployment, et cetera, et cetera. Go back to page five of 168. So we sent out the RFP if we could scroll down a little bit, please, sorry. So as we do with these competitive proposals, we sent that out, we had very, very good interest. And to sort through, there were 10 proposals, and you can see the scoring there. So that's the first step, and that's just on the written proposals as they're presented. Arigo was the high on this stage, just stay there, please, go back. But you can see that there were others that were also scored very well. The incumbent firm, Asker, Etzer, is on the far left. They did not score and proceed to the next stage. So you can scroll down to the top of the next page here. So then after the review of the written proposals, four firms were invited to make in-person interviews. And that's an important piece of this, to flush out any questions and get to know the software is better. And at this stage, Arigo, as well as with the written, was the top scoring, and you can see the scores there. Arigo is a well-established firm, 18 years. And if you go to the bottom of this page, please. So after, with the scoring, both the written and the interviews, the pricing of the, was negotiated. You can see that the year one, as you can imagine, the startup, to make the conversion and the training, is the 350. But then each year after that, as with any software licensing, the annual city cost is about $155,000 going forward. So after careful review of the proposals, going through our professional services, interviewing that, it's our firm recommendation to go with Arigo for the project management software. This material was provided to council back on November 4th, and have no reason to change that since then. And ask for your consideration from there. Thank you.
All right, thank you for the staff report. Moving to council, questions, comments, concerns?
Woody? Okay, my mic's already on. Yeah. Representative from the firm? Appreciate you coming out again.
Thank you.
Yeah, there's a few questions. Software that the city purchased, is that the software that y'all use on projects or what?
I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
No, the software, the city purchased, the $340,000, is that the one that y'all use on your programs or what?
Yes, it is.
It is? So you recommended them to buy that, right?
I'm sorry, I'm from the vendor, so.
Yeah, I don't understand the, we're here to award that, so we haven't.
No, I'm asking, we bought software for $340,000, and it was on an item of three different things on there. And I was asking, because I see in here that you're going to be able to move pretty fast on this. And I was wondering, is that the software that you use on your projects?
They're, they're, I'm sorry, they are the vendor for the project management software. We haven't awarded, we haven't bought anything for 350. We haven't bought anything for 350, understanding.
This is contract with?
It's with them, yes.
Okay, that's what I wanted to find out. I wanted to find out what software they use. Is this the one that they automatically use all the time?
Yes, we're buying it from them.
Okay, all right, so.
It's the only software we sell to our customers.
Already. And going through and looking at this.
Member Owens, if I could, we have not purchased software already. That's what's before you tonight.
Right, this is to award the software, Councilmember Owens, that we haven't purchased this software until, until we vote tonight.
Earlier last month, the $340,000, we didn't purchase that software that said we was going to use it.
You removed it from the consideration.
No, 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 Kevin, it was before then.
We had other software renewals.
There was three items on there. We got $1.7 million in, $340,000 was going to go to software. There was amlets in there that were purchased on that, and there was another item, and I don't know what that was.
Member Owens?
I don't remember.
There was an item where we put $900,000 in budgeted items towards vehicles. Then there was a $300,000 item for capital software of some kind. I don't know what it was.
You're thinking of the budget, the modification to the budget to allow us to purchase.
I'm going back to November when we had the three items on there that were approved.
Member Perez is correct. All you did was amend the budget.
All right, let's go ahead. I've got other questions I want to answer here that you've got. And right now, you're saying that you can come in here and do that, and within four to six weeks, you would have that operational, right?
The plan is to have the base software operational in four to six weeks to allow the city to process purchase orders and pay estimates to their contractors. We would have a six-month period where we would continue and figure that software to get it fully operational.
All right, so you said it takes six months, but then within here, you say the information you got there, that you can do it within four to six weeks, have it up operational.
The initial software turn-on to allow the city to access the software, utilize the software and get value would be in four to six weeks. And then the full implementation, including all the integrations that are required, some of the data migration that's required, that would be a full six months of implementation.
Okay, and so right now, the city has, what, 853 users? And so you're going to train the 853 people or what?
No, it's actually a train-the-trainer program. So we would train the city to train the full usage.
So we're going.
And that would include both city personnel and external.
Yeah, I understand that, because you're going to train one person here, and then the staff will change the, train the rest of their people. Is, do we know how long that's going to take for training 850 something people?
And Owens, there's not 800, there's 850 people in the organization, police officers, firefighters, any number of people will not be, so it's not 850 people.
Well, that's what you got on there right now, and it'd be 1,251.
There's just like a lot going on here. I guess I'm struggling here. One guy's saying, train the trainer. We were being told earlier that this is a program that we could use for capital budgeting or processing of those POs. Who's going to do that? I'm uncomfortable with the train the trainer concept, because we were doing over half a billion dollars in projects. And I'm just wondering that, here, we had a lot of issues with, let's go run out some software and then see what happens on other items and doing it in a short order, and for the amount of work we're doing. Now, that buzzword, train the trainer, didn't make me feel good. And then when I look at the scoring, this, this particular vendor didn't even score the best. There was a score of 81, 80, and 73. And this person is being selected at 73, and then I guess the existing incumbent was somewhere in the 50s.
All right, so real, real quick, and I want to remember, excuse me, Trent to speak to this real quick. So if you go back to the scoring, this was the original scoring, the way I read this, this was the original scoring.
The written, the proposals.
Through the proposals, then go to the next page.
And this is the.
All the top vendors were then interviewed, and based on the interview, this, this vendor was selected. Do I have that correct?
A hundred percent.
That's correct. And so I guess the question is, Trent, walk us through, walk the council through what this software specifically is used for, who uses it, and how does it, how does it work for the city, apparently?
Sure, so our project management software is basically used for the day-to-day operations of the capital projects. So it's used by us, it's used by our contractors, it's used by our engineers, and our construction managers and inspectors that work on these projects on a day-to-day basis. So all of the paperwork that's part of that process, it's driven through the system. So submittals go through the system, they're approved through the system, they're available for everybody to look at through the system. Daily reports go through the system, they're used to compile the monthly invoices. And it's just the way the workflow for all the capital projects functions. And it's not new to us. We've been doing this in a software for 11 years. And the recommendation is to move with a newer software, a different software at this time, that provides additional functionality and better integration with our existing systems.
Trent, is it also safe to say, I mean, our, our vendors, when I say vendors, an engineering company, construction company, all of them, they submit their payouts through this system as well?
Yes, sir.
So they have to buy a license, or they have to buy something?
I believe this is set up to where, when we implement this, and we, we pay for our annual maintenance costs, that that includes the ability for those folks to use the system as well.
Did that help?
Yes, Mayor, I think it clarifies what it.
So how does it get trained? How do we get trained?
Well, yeah, I mean.
So training, if I could address that real quickly, is they're going to train us?
Mr. Epperson, give me just a second, please. The part that I had concern with Mayor was, and I just ticking off three items. Contractor, inspector, engineers, practically every vendor is moving. And I guess I am concerned, considering what a track record we have of new technology, thinking water billing, moving quickly and then doing as many over half a billion dollars in projects. I guess I'm just curious, what is the impetus now? This doesn't seem like the opportune time to change. I guess the second thing I'd like to know is, why did the incumbent score so poorly if we've been using them for the last 11 years? Because it just seems like this is not the opportune time to change. And I don't have, I don't have clear understanding of that, reading this memorandum, and I'd like to have more light on that, if possible.
So we were at the end of the last five-year contract with, we had with them a year ago. We did a one-year extension with a plan to move to a different software because of some of the, the additional capabilities and additional integrations that, that will provide us a better product long-term.
Yeah, and I just got some questions on here I need answers to, of talking about this. So saying that the integration would take approximately six months, but you're confirmed you can do it in four or five weeks. So you're going to take a six-month deal and condense it to four or five weeks?
No, that's not what's going to occur. I think he's clarified twice that we're going to do a quick ramp-up so that we can get the system operational, start using the workflow on the system, and then the full integration and the full implementation will be rolled out over the six-month period.
You know, and what we got on here, this thing was advertised for five years, and if both the firm and the city agreed, it would be additional five years, right? That's how, it was not advertised like that. It was advertised in a newspaper that should go to year by year by year.
What's the question?
You advertise this in the newspaper, right? And so from what I understand, is when you advertised it, you advertised it as a five-year project. And if both the city and the county, I mean, the city and the firm decided and agreed to, it would be extended another five years. Is that correct?
Not, not, I'm not sure what's been extended five years. If you're talking about this particular solicitation, I'm not sure if it was advertised for five years or not. This is a, a initial year of a contract with locking in five years worth of cost based on the proposal.
Kind of odd, because the city wrote the specs on it to take it out, and we don't understand what it was. But really, when we, when we come through there, the big concern that we had, or I had, was the letter that came out of the city and how well Atzer was doing on there. And they were 24/7 help desk on there. And they were, you know, making corrections when needed, when the mistakes were made on it. So I'm just wondering why, why you'd want to go ahead and do it on a one-year basis? And the other, last time when you were standing up here and we were talking, I said, is this guaranteed maximum price for five years? And you said, yes. And I'd like for the vendor to say that's just what it is. You got it. The price that we have in here for the five one-year contracts that guarantee maximum price.
It is. So if you look, the one-year price of 349 is for the initial implementation, plus the first year's subscription. And then there's a flat fee every year that does not increase in five years.
So if you add that up, the five-year cost is $999,417. And if we add the software in, it comes up to 1.3 million in there if we're using the software.
I have a question. What's the 1.3? This is for the 900.
Take the $999,417 and add $340 to it.
No, it's 999, and that includes the software. We did not purchase anything separate from this.
All right, let me ask you, what, Mr. Epperson, what happens if the train, the train the trainer thing doesn't work? Our guys, just go with my line of thought here. What do we have to do to get more services here? I'm assuming that you bill by the hour, or is there a fee, or what happens if we need more support?
I'm, we, I'm sure we can have additional training, but if I can, you know, explaining a little bit how that works is that we've been doing that concept with the existing software for many, many years, is that we have got, get, get training initially, we train our staff. And then we have to train, every time we get a new contractor, we have to train their personnel. Every time we get a new engineer, we have to train their personnel. Every time we bring in a outside construction manager or construction inspectors, we have to train them. So it's, it's, I mean, it's just the normal course of business in that we train, we get trained ourselves, so our people know it inside and out. And then we train everybody as they come on board for each individual project.
Let me ask you a question. What is the cost of the existing contract on a year-to-year basis right now?
The one that's concluding?
Yes, yes, sir. Sorry, I'm, I'm just, I'm trying to compare apples to apples here.
It's, it's less, but you know, it's, all of the softwares we looked at in this go-around that were comparable or had similar functionality were in the same ballpark as this cost.
And I guess the, the point I'm trying to get to is if it's not broke, don't fix it. And it feels like we've got half a billion dollars of, let me, with respect. We're trying to do a lot here, and we're doing half a billion dollars in projects, and it just seems inopportune to change. And if it's, if it's, what you're telling me is a guy that we're using is less, and they're not egregious, as in we didn't fire them. I'm, I'm having a hard time understanding paying more, and then all of that shift and all that change. I mean, we had a really hard time with the water implementation, and I'm just, I'm struggling to go through another change. And that, that's not even about money. That's just, it doesn't seem like a reasonable thing. We've got everybody trained on one system. And then to change again, they may do a great job, but I really don't know that. I'd like more support.
Can I answer? So it's fun to bring up water every time, but the fact is that we have all kinds of different softwares that we implement. We're doing City Works, we're doing all those successfully. The vendor, the incumbent, was the next to last, and the written scoring didn't even make it out of that. And it is, we need to upgrade it, and that's our recommendation. So if we went through this whole process proposal, we can implement this and execute this, and there won't be problems, and this will be the way we need, we recommend to go, so.
Yes, sir. And what was the cost on the current vendor, again?
Their proposal this go-around?
I'm just saying, what did we pay the last fiscal year for this service? Just so we're comparing apples to apples.
Well, it's not comparing apples to apples, because their new proposal was much higher than our previous contract.
Well, I don't even have that data, so I'm struggling to approve something I don't have data on to compare.
So their proposal for you is this data.
Their, their 12-month proposal is $356,400.
That was.
One year extension, this year.
Is that what Atzer was going to charge?
Yes.
They didn't turn you in? They didn't turn you in a price of $600,000, you take the software out of that-
That's if you go to a five-year, that's 60 months.
Hey, we got-
And that doesn't include getting your data back.
Just really quick then, so what, over five years, $600,000, over five years, a million?
Plus-
What we're talking, I just, I just want clarification.
There's a caveat to that, it's another million dollars when we pull out of that contract to get our data in a usable format. That was what was quoted. There's an additional million dollars to get our data in a usable format, in a database format that we can actually pull in.
Do you want to respond to that, Fred?
Well, let's just-
Well, no, no, I think it's fair, we're talking to $400,000 here.
If we want to talk about some of the functionality issues we have, we can get into the details on those as well.
I'd like to talk about the money first.
Well, the money is 1.6 million after five years.
I wanted to say Merry Christmas, how are y'all doing tonight? I appreciate the council and the mayor, and it's been a pleasure to work with the staff the last 11 years. And so if I can bring some clarification, we put a, we put a proposal together for $600,000, that's true, for a five-year total, and we did say a one-year extension for $300,000 that would go toward that $600,000. There was never a requirement for data migration in any type of format, so it's just, it's just not true.
Where did the million dollars come out to pull out of?
So we requested our data at the end of this contract, and to get, to get it in a database format, we were quoted a million dollars.
So what would have happened if you wouldn't have migrated the data? It would still be $600,000 versus a million?
What's the question?
If you had not migrated the data, if the requests had not been-
Woody, Woody, hang on, we got, we got two questions on the table, so hang on, hang on a second.
If there was not a data migration request from the city, would it be $600,000 versus a million?
Your contract expired in September.
Guys, let's, let's, let's ask one question at a time, please.
Member Owens, let's, I'd like to hear the answers. If there was no data migration involved, it's $600,000 versus a million?
I don't know what their proposal was in total, if it was 600, then it was 600 versus this 999, that's correct.
The $400,000 is material to me, and with the amount of changes, I'm going to let it go, I can't talk about it anymore. The amount of changes, we don't need to put, when we're doing half a billion dollars plus in projects.
So if I could give you one good example of the functionality issues?
I appreciate that, but I just, we're $400,000 worse, we're going to put all our vendors through all kinds of stuff, I have very little faith that we're going to get a software changeover cleanly, I can't get there, not going to be able to get-
Mr. Epperson, would you complete your comment there?
Sure, so we went into our second five-year contract six years ago, and at that point, we upgraded softwares. One of the functionalities we lost that ti, at that time was consistently getting email alerts through the system. So the system is basically a workflow-type system. When one thing happens, then it goes to the next person, they get notified, and then it goes to the next person, they get notified. So for five years, we've dealt with, you don't get the automatic notifications, somebody's got to let you know separately that, hey, it's your turn to look at this now, in some of the function, in some of the functionality in the software. And so when that hasn't been addressed for five years, that's a problem, and we need to move on at this point, and we believe we've selected the best vendor through who proposed on this project.
Yeah, I'll just, let me just kind of jump in, as probably the only one who's actually used this, this type of software. The functionality and having your level of comforts, it's really important. Train the trainer, that's just how, that's how these systems work. You know, I, when, when I have to use Procore or E-Builder, there's always somebody on the construction side that informs us how to use it, they give us the process, we don't get somebody from Procore to come to my office and train the individuals in my, in my office. But I think there is a selection process with respect to price, prices, prices included as part of the selection process. ATSER got the highest score of all the vendors, which reflects that it was the lower value. But overall, staff is recommending this, the recommended vendor, because they think it meets their needs. No matter what, we're have to spend, we have to spend more money on a software. So there's not like, there, there's not a, an opportunity for us to just pay what we did last year, we have to spend money on a software. Staff, who's the one that's using the software, is the one that's saying, we need the functionality, this is internal to us, this allows us to, to process projects. So I think, you know, unless there's some other commentary from any of the other council members, I think we just see if we can allow the vote to proceed and get on to the next thing.
Any other comments or questions from council?
No, you know, the only thing that, that I was looking at is that, you know, we had a contract to renew this for $600,000, we're going to spend, say, a million dollars, you know, to do this over a five-year period of time. And listen, you know, I'm not a stranger to program and project management, I sold that nationally for eight years for Raytheon, and on some of the largest projects in the United States, and actually trained HDR on their program management, so it's, it's not a thing, it's a secret. But I was just trying to get to the bottom of it, of why we are spending an additional, you know, on that one we had the $600,000 that ATSER had said to, they would provide it for $600,000, and out of that, the $340,000 for the software would be taken out of the $600,000, and the balance of the contract would go for the remainder for the five years. So, you know, I don't, and I don't know why it was broken up for one year at a time. There's a good probability that with the new people coming on the council this, this next year, they may terminate this contract. Okay? So, I mean, so I can't, I can't understand if you're, if you're trying to get this thing out, or a five-year contract, and you break it down for five one-year contracts. Because there's, there's always an opportunity for the council to approve it.
Mayor, I think it's probably a good opportunity for us to call the question and get to the vote.
Yeah, I, I mean, bottom line is, to answer, and I, and I agree, to answer your question, it, you know, it went year to year, because I think staff realized we weren't ready to make that change. So it went year to year, I'm paraphrasing, so Trent, you know, correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong there. So we, we did an annual after the last five years, because we weren't quite ready to go to the market on, on, on bidding or getting an RFP on this. We've done that, it's gone through the normal channels, this is what staff is recommending, the $600 or $675,000, depending on which, you know, process the ATSER, you know, wanted to go through, isn't necessarily apples to apples with what we're purchasing from this other company. And, and so, you know, we're, we're trying to upgrade, we're trying to bring a better, more robust, you know, product to the market. Fred's a great guy, he's, he's done well in his business, and I appreciate what he's done here in Pearland for the last eight, 11 years. He, he's, he's built a lot of his business off of what he started right here, and, and so it, it's, it's been good. So we've asked a lot of questions, I think we've got council ready to vote, and so we've had somebody call for the questions, so with that, I'm going to-
Another just a concern, Mayor, that, that we had one price from them, and time we had the software into this one, you're talking about $1,339,000 total to do what we want to do.
And it, and it's not, it's 999,000, that includes the software, not the 1.4.
Add the software into it.
That's including the software. That, that's been stated publicly, that includes the software.
Oh, when you come out, well, the 999,000 is just when you take the five years and you add it up, and it comes up $999,000 is what it comes up to, correct? Okay? So that's, that's the only thing, and, you know, it's, we had this letter from the city telling how great ATSER was doing, and of course, you know, on there. And one thing that really did bother me on this is that, and I asked Fred about it, I said, have you ever talked to Clay, have you ever talked to Trent? And he said, no, I haven't. And what come out is when we started talking, the things that was stated, that you can't believe everything he tells you. And I was wondering, Trent, how you and Clay come out without making that statement about an individual that's been working for us for 11 years, and you said, you know, you can't believe everything he's telling you, it is, and you've never talked to him. Okay? I don't like to hear that against anybody that does business with the city.
Question?
I don't like to hear that, you know, because they put out their effort to do it.
Mayor, I think it's time we vote.
Thank you. Thank you. With that, Madam Secretary, we're going to call for the vote on this measure.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
No.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
No.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
The motion carries forward to two.
All right, moving forward, item number nine, Mayor Proton, would you put it on the table, please?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Consideration, possible action, first reading of ordinance number 1605-2, so moved.
We have a motion, a second, staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a first reading of budget amendment number two. This involves our standard carryovers as we're early in the fiscal year, and Mr. Roche has a PowerPoint to go through that for you.
All right, I'm going to move kind of fast, just because this is a lot of standard stuff, I'll point out the items that I pointed out previously in memos and such. So this is budget amendment number two, this is the carryover amendment, we'll go through what a carryover is, we'll give a little bit of projections for the general fund on sort of how we are, look like we might be ending FY21. We will talk about the recommended carryovers, as well as any new appropriations. Carryovers, we'll define in a second, new appropriations, truly new money coming from fund balance that we're agreeing to spend if it's passed here tonight, and then I'll take some questions at the very end, please. So carryovers are the process of how we recognize and move expenditures and revenues from one fiscal year to the next. We're not moving any revenues tonight, just expenditures this year, very standard practice in financial management, I think every city in Texas probably does it. For us, carryovers are for goods and services that were approved by city council and ordered in fiscal year 21, but not received in that fiscal year. So now you're receiving this item in FY22, but you don't necessarily have the budget to pay for it in FY22, that budget is still in FY21. What the carryover does is it brings, brings forward that money to pay for those items you're getting this fiscal year from FY21 to FY22. The, a lot of these are going to be special projects or purchases that were approved or budgeted, and, and, you know, they could be mid-year items, et cetera. And what they're not, though, is we didn't, we're not going to bring a lot of small-dollar items to you under $1,000, we're not going to use this as a way to get around the, what city council set up, set out for us with the FY22 adopted budget, and the, are, these accounts are not going to be operating, so like salaries and things, and they're not going to be a supply account, so you're not filling up your pen drawer with this, these carryovers. Looking at the general fund here, this is where we think we'll end the year, but it's going to change based off, as we continue to close the books and we get new invoices from vendors and we pay those off, you'll see here that revenues are 2.8% ahead of where we thought they would be, thanks to sales tax largely, expenditures are about 4.3% under where we thought they would be. This is some salary savings, as well as a little bit of contractuals and things like that miscellaneous expenditures. I've detailed them a little bit more here, but due to time, I'm going to go ahead and move on. But, important note, budget amendment two doesn't contain any new appropriations for the general fund, these are all items that were funded in FY21. Here you can see the math of taking the total general fund expenditures that are being carried over, that gets added to the total general fund expenditure line, that kind of recalculates what our minimum target needs to be and how much we're over policy. So at FY22, we're projecting to be about 115 days over the 90-day policy, so there's a healthy fund balance in the general fund. Moving on to the enterprise operating fund, this is the other big pot of money, there's many funds being carried over tonight, but this is the main one, this and the general fund are the main one. So, quick update, I incorrectly labeled an $83,000 expense for asset management as a new appropriation, it is not a new appropriation, it was funded in FY21, that's on me. What this does is it makes it simpler, the enterprise fund has no new appropriations being requested, it's all carryover items. Same thing that we just saw, you take your $64 million expense budget, you add the carryovers, in this case, 1.8 million, it up to 65.9 million, and you can see the ending cash equivalents, it's a little bit more complicated than this, and you'll get the full numbers with the comprehensive report, but we'll end up somewhere around 13.1 million in ending cash equivalents, the end of FY22. The motor pool fund does have one new appropriation I want to make you aware of, it's $63,000 for additional vehicle rentals, so that when equipment goes down, we don't have staff laying idle, or we're waiting for vehicles to come in, which due to logistics issues can take a long time, and this will let us rent that equipment and get right back to work. Couple of things to sort out with the motor pool fund, I just want to be clear, it contains 1.2 million in carryover requests for vehicles and equipment that were ordered in FY21, but have not yet been received, so when we get those items, we'll need the money to pay for them in FY22, that's why those carryovers exist. We have the new appropriation there for $63,000 for rental equipment and vehicles, and then we are asking city council to authorize $1.7 million or a new tranche of vehicle purchases using the Broadway reimbursement funding. I've divided this into three slides here, you can see here are the equipment replacements, there's four items for $625,000, there's vehicle replacements, about, I think that's 12 items for $655,000, and then these are total loss vehicle replacements, so these are vehicles, you know, if a squad car is involved in a pursuit and gets hit and it gets totaled, hey, we got to replace that right away, we don't want an officer having to use an older backup vehicle, or, you know, a year and a half or anything like that. So that's what these vehicles are, things that we're replacing right away, and then we'll get some sort of insurance money later on down the road, later on in the year. Looking at all other funds here, special revenue funds, that $10 million figure that's being carried over, most of these are going to be grants. Grants are always kind of given to us on a one-year basis, you get the money all at once, but it's for a multi-year project, you're not going to spend it all in one year, so you got to roll it over every year, a lot of that's spelt out by federal guidelines, if we don't roll it over, then you don't get to keep the money. Risk management fund has a small carryover of $15,000, and then PEDC fund has $1.7 million in carryovers as well. So voting on this tonight, you'll be adopting Exhibit A, and then next vote, second and final vote will be next week. Any questions?
Nothing to add, thank you, Mayor.
Good deal, thanks for the staff report, we'll move to council questions, comments on this item, any questions? Member Kamkar?
Eric, I just sent you the memorandum that you guys sent, four o'clock, and it was based on the data that was previously presented in the November, late November, Thursday packet. I just, I'm a little confused here, and it's kind of my first go-around now with budget amendments. Can we pull up slide five in that memorandum that you guys sent out? I just emailed it to you. Just for the record, the city council rules, this is being set by the staff, this is not anything that Alex Kamkar generated, just for the record. Let me scroll down, so, go, scroll up just so we're putting context on what these are, just a little bit, there you go, so we can see the top line. We have revenues on the top, on the left-hand side, and expenses on the right-hand side. As we scroll down, we're talking about, Eric, column, the far-right column, in this case, amended budget number two, i.e. ordinance number 16052, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, cool. So we're looking at the, the rightmost on both the expenses and revenues, can we scroll down now? So, in the middle column- So in the middle columns is kind of where we are today, correct? You know, revenues, expenses, and then the column to the right is where we're moving to. The, the expenses went from 303 to 321. A lot of that is CDBG funds carrying over and other items. Explain, I guess where I'm, I need data on is the 1.7 million additional appropriation is coming from TERS dollars coming back to us. We're deciding to allocate that into motor pool. Is that right?
So that's been a longstanding policy of the city that when we receive the Broadway reimbursement back, that, that would be used to capitalize the motor pool. The motor pool having vehicles and equipment that were several years behind replacement schedule. And by doing this, it's a pot of money that's dedicated to funding that. And it also relieves pressure on the general fund and therefore taxpayers from having to buy a lot of vehicles all at once.
Can we zero in on, that's zero, can we line up 703? I just want to make sure so folks can see this and we can talk about it. So majority of the money is going from this 5 million number on the expense side to a 7.9 million with a big chunk of that being the 1.7. And then there was a $63,000 additional appropriation that was outside, but that's going to a vehicle essentially. Okay? I just, I, I wanted to just highlight that. I don't have a ton more comment. I just want to make sure I'm understanding where the ball is moving. We have the 3230 item that is coming up here in the future. It's either going to be December or January. I made a comment, the, essentially the, the errors with the city, not with the residents. Residents didn't make an error on paying their bill. Residents didn't make an error on counting the water. I'm going to struggle to have dollars coming into the budget and then getting allocated with this item still out here. My, my policy position at that time was we need to use city dollars that are unallocated fund balance. And if we didn't put this in motor pool, it would go to unallocated fund balance. I'm, I'm going to say that we delay everything that's not a carryover. That way this item can possibly go there in the instance that we do this 3230 in December or January, and we resolve that and we pay that bill. Because as was discussed previously, that bill has to be paid. Somebody, there's no free water. And so I, I just, I'm hesitant to get 1.7 million in free cash flow coming in and then allocating it with that item still standing out there. So I would advocate to this council that that be something that we consider. I'm happy to approve everything else, but I would like to hold off on that item and put that to fund balance until we can resolve that 3230 item. I'm, I'm just trying to be pragmatic because what will happen in the, what will, the bureaucrats will tell us and the team will tell us, we don't have that money, guys. We spent it all. Or it's been appropriated, or it's gone somewhere. We, we have 1.7 million here. So I, that's the only comment I'm putting out there in the ether for us to discuss on, but that's just me policy-wise.
Eric, did you have a follow-up?
Yeah. So this bureaucrat is going to tell you, you don't have 1.7 million for that. That's, that's in the motor pool fund. That's where that money is. That's where that revenue was booked. It is not being spent on any enterprise fund vehicles. So if it's not being spent tonight, then it's just going to sit there. It has nothing to do with the enterprise fund.
This is free dollars, right? Like they're uncommitted until we vote on it today, correct?
They're committed in the fund already. That revenue was adopted.
Can you go back to that, the attachment that you had up there? I just want to, I want to reiterate that, but I think the sheet you just had up there, that attachment, that was also the resolution.
One second.
So if you highlight that motor pool fund, you'll notice that the middle, the 13252 and the 13252 is not changing. So that just shows that money is already there. It's a question of whether you, we allocate it as recommended. And I'll also make the point that part of that expenditure that's not carryover is for replacing vehicles that have been totaled. And so we don't have those at all. So.
But where did the revenue go for the, the motor pool increase from? I mean?
It's already there. The 13252 is constant through each one of those.
Okay. So the way that we charge those, those vehicles to the motor pool fund, whether they're grease or fire or whatever, those dollars that the service fund is providing into that, I mean, we, we literally said this is TERS money getting allocated. I mean, we didn't make that up. You guys said that.
Yeah.
This is TERS money. And so I guess I'm wondering, how did the TERS money go from here to here without discussing with us? It's just put in the motor?
No, no. It, it was discussed at budget very, very clearly that that was. I'll show you six places that was.
I guess I missed that in the gigantic budget. I, I just, I put my policy position where I'm at. We don't have to go do it if we don't want to. I just, I'm really, really loathe to go put money when we know that this 3230 thing needs to get resolved and the citizens are probably going to have to eat this. And we're, we're moving money around and I'm just really uncomfortable with that. So I'm going to let that be.
And a couple of things. I just, I just want to ask the question for the record. Could we legally move TERS monies to the enterprise?
Yes.
I just want to make sure legally, because I know those, you have to be real careful how we.
So the TERS money is, is a reimbursement to the city for our general fund expenditure years ago. And so as, as I stated, the, the, it was budgeted, it was discussed, and that money has been earmarked and being put into the motor pool fund. But I don't know of any legal reason that council couldn't, they chose move some or all that out of motor, motor pool and strip that back down. I'll leave us short there and move it into something else.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens? Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Nay.
The motion carries five to one.
All right. Item number 10, staff has requested that we move this to the December 13th.
Yes, Mayor. We, just for, for you all, we, we want to get a, the exhibits clarified. There were some parts that were in the ETJ or in the county. We want to make sure that's perfect before we bring it back to you. So.
All right. So with that, we'll move to matters removed from the consent agenda. We'll double back to item B as in boy. You did the last one. So, Mr. Kamkar, would you place B as in boy on the table, please?
Item consideration, possible action, resolution number R2021-267. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion of second. Staff report?
This is a interlocal agreement with Presoria County. We've had such a thing for a number of years. What this is doing is adding a intersection or two, and it's also changing language so that it's easier for all parties to update this when necessary, when news signals come on. Nothing to add.
Member Owens, you pulled it.
Yeah.
On there that this is not going to cost us to buy more equipment and hire more people, is it?
Councilman Owen, this agreement's been in place for several years already. It was adopted by council several years ago. This is just an amendment to that agreement moving forward. So it's handling with our existing staff and then doing any parts or material reconciliation at the end of the year with regards to any materials that are shared based on the percentage in the agreement.
Yes. So we're not going to expend any additional staff or equipment to do this?
No, sir.
Okay. Can you go ahead and get Magnolia 40 all the way through? From 35 to 288, while we doing this?
I'll, I'll second, third, fourth, and fifth that. Just write us a letter.
Commissioners court that's got to make that.
Sign it.
That's the only question I had on that.
Yeah.
Is that all? All right. Any other questions, comments from council? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Left the chamber.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Moving to item D as in David. Member Perez, would you place that on the table, please?
Absolutely, Mayor. Consideration, possible action, resolution number R2021-276. So moved.
Second.
Motion of second. Staff report?
Yes, sir. This is a item for, that was budgeted for replacement of a fire vehicle, getting us in line with the, the buy board. Don't expect delivery for this for some time, but this will start that process going. So nothing to add.
Okay. I asked, pull us off. Can you go to showing where the, on here of where, you know, we paid out expense out there to maintenance and stuff on the, on this piece of equipment?
A page number in the agenda item, you mean?
That was one of the things because it looked like, you know, within the first year, we spent quite a bit on here. See, over $7,000 that we put in, and this is a 2014, and we paid that out in 2015. And I'm sure with this one, you know, there's, you know, there's some, probably something that should be on there to get some kind of a warranty on there. But this one, the new one, has a five-year, 100,000 mile warranty. And I was just wondering, was any of the maintenance costs, you know, that's pretty heavy.
I don't know if we know on the fly, you know, it's hard to know something like that, but it, it could have been damaged in a, some kind of other thing that wouldn't cover by the warranty. We can come back and fill that out for you.
And as a matter of fact, Chief, I, I asked you the, the other night, Saturday night, what was eight foot, five inch telescoping pole on the truck? I mean, that's the first time I've seen that on there. Neither one of us had an answer for what it was on, on that vehicle.
Councilmember Owens, it's 8.5 inches?
Yeah, it's eight foot and five inches telescoping pole.
No, sir, it's 8.5 inches, not eight feet, five inches.
No, it shows on there as 8.5. And that's what I was wondering, where you going to put it? The other one, and then these are all simple deal, a super auto ejection. I mean, it's a top fly open, you bell out or whatever. But anyway, you've answered my, my question on there. It was just odd things that you see on, on a vehicle. And do we save any of the parts on there? Any of the lights or anything? The cattle guard on the front of this one, do we have another one? Or can we take that off and put it on the other one?
So the manufacturers are pretty on to us. And so they, they will change the specifications as the vehicles change specifications. And so they're usually not transferable from one vehicle to the other for model years down the road.
So when we get to sell this, we'll sell it as it is with all equipment and everything on it?
We'll take off emergency equipment. We won't sell emergency equipment.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from council? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
All right. With that, we'll move to other business. There is none. Mayor, council issues for council discussion. There is none.
Mayor, on the, in regards to the public comment earlier from the Pearland Professional Firefighters Association.
Oh, yes.
I'm going to request that as a, a future agenda item to dig into that.
Member Carbone, could we do that in a special session or a special? I agree on that. I'd like to learn more. Executive session, not special. No, but I, I agree. I, that, we need to know more what happened there.
We'll let Attorney Coker figure out that language.
Calling for an executive session over the comments from the Firefighters Association, which I think was in the planning work anyway, to let everybody know. So with that, we're going to move to adjournment at 11 o'clock.